I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, October 6, 2021. Sherry, would you call roll, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioner Lottis.
Here.
Commissioner Trent.
Here.
And welcome to our new Planning Commissioner Jamie Bennett.
Here.
Thank you.
Yes, you may not be able to see it, but right over there is our latest Commissioner, Jamie Bennett. He's a resident of the Upper Ojai, has a lot of management experience, and I'm looking forward to hearing from him, meeting after meeting. All right, pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Trent, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, divisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Public Communications. The time set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Sherry, do we have anyone?
Yes. There's Dawn Keating, and she's on, and right there.
Okay.
There's a hand up. Steve.
Good evening, Dawn. What do you have to say?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My comment is actually specific to item number two on El Roblar Hotel, but last meeting, public comment wasn't taken, and so I can either hold my comment for item number two, or if you'd like me to speak now, I'd be happy to do so.
Are we gonna go through public comment on? If you have seen the agenda, ma'am, you will notice that items two and three, because the applications are not yet settled, they are being continued to future meetings.
I did see that, and I still would like to comment.
Sure, we can open up.
I'm sure that's fine, okay. Why don't you wait until we get to item two, then?
Okay. I'd be happy to do so.
We'll ask you back in at that time. That'll be more appropriate.
That would be wonderful. Maybe I'll hear the information at that point, so thank you.
Okay.
Chair Quilisi, so I would recommend simply opening the public comment and closing it once the public comments finished, and then.
And then do the continuation. Yeah, okay, great. Sherry, do we have anyone else who has signed in to comment? All right. Then we'll close out Public Communications and go to the consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission from September 15. Any Commissioners that have refinements to those minutes? I found not a thing myself. Hearing none, could we have a motion on approval of the minutes?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we adopt the Ojai Planning Commission meeting minutes for September 15, 2021.
All right.
A second, and I just would like to compliment staff on the additional detail they're providing in these minutes. I think it's actually helpful to summarize, just in bullet form even, some of the discussion.
Yeah, I particularly liked.
Very nice.
Agreed.
Seeing the list of who spoke during the public comment was very helpful to me as well.
Yes.
Any discussion of the motion to approve? If not, Sherry, would you call a roll, please?
Quilisi.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Lottis.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Bennett. Thank you.
Disclosure of site visits and expartee contacts. We have just the one venue in question tonight. Would you like to start, Vice Chair Nolan?
Sure. I visited the site, and I'm very familiar with the site, and I have had no expartee contacts.
Okay. Commissioner Lottis?
I am familiar with the site, although I didn't, I wasn't able to visit during this last two-week period, and I have had no expartee contacts.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Trent?
I have visited the site. I am aware of the site, and I have had no expartee contacts.
Very good. Commissioner Bennett?
I have had no.
You need to press the button, so the light comes on, and then we'll all hear you. There you go.
I have observed the site, but not had any expartee contact.
Terrific. And I visited the site on several occasions, including this afternoon, and did have an expartee contact. I was out there running a tape measure across the sidewalk and the spacing to the front of the building, and a very nice lady came up, said hello, introduced herself, the name went right by. I apologized to her, but I presumed she was an owner of the space because she pulled out a key and unlocked the door and went in. That was the last I saw of her. I introduced myself as a Planning Commissioner, told her I was trying to measure the space between the building and the street at various points, and that was the sum total of our conversation. All right, let's go on. Public hearing item number two on the Hotel El Roblar. Anything you want to lead us to there, Lucas?
Yeah, so this item is being recommended to be continued to a date nonspecific, to allow staff the opportunity to work with the applicant in terms of resolving some of the challenges with that project at this moment. Hearing that there was someone in the audience, virtually, that wanted to speak, as the city attorney had mentioned, we can certainly open public comment and provide that opportunity for the public to speak on this item.
And to clarify, when it's being, when it will be, the recommendation is to continue to a date not certain, which would mean re-noticing, including publishing the legal ad and giving the thousand-foot notice again, which staff will do.
Yeah, okay. Let's open this for public comment, then, and the lady who was prepared to speak earlier, Dawn, I think it was? Please go ahead, ma'am. Are you muted? I think you are.
Hello?
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dawn Teeding. I'm a cultural resource specialist. Last week, I submitted substantial new information to the CDD Director for this project, the entire remodel of Hotel El Roblar, previously known as the Oaks at Ojai. The information was the city's own report, a 2018 historical resources evaluation report performed by Caltrans for the City of Ojai's ATP project. The historical resources evaluation found Hotel El Roblar to be a historical resource under CEQA. As such, CEQA requires the city to assess whether this project may cause a substantial adverse change in the significance of the historical resource. The current staff report did not cite the report and its findings and whether an evaluation will be performed. As this is a matter of public interest and concern, and in the spirit of the City of Ojai's core value of transparency, I'm hoping to hear an update tonight on this matter and where we are in the process. Specifically, I have three questions. Will a historic resources report be required for this project? Two, if a report is required, will the evaluation be performed by the city at an arm's length from the applicant, as recommended, to ensure the evaluation is fair and just? And three, if not, why not? Hotel El Roblar is a significant part of Ojai history and Ojai's historic downtown. As such, perhaps the historic resources report could be performed by the city using discretionary funds to produce an independent report. I believe that this was what was done for the theater. The Ojai Historic Preservation Commission should be involved in this historic concern. When I worked at the Ojai Valley Museum, people wanted to know what's going on at the Oaks. The question is still being asked, and the public deserves to know. I would appreciate your comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any response you wish to make at the time, Lucas?
Certainly. So, we are currently reviewing this project in its totality. The historic resources report is currently being reviewed as to whether or not that would be something that we'd be looking into further. So the matter is being looked into currently. I do not have a response as to whether or not it will be required at this point.
Okay. Anyone else, Sherry, who wants to talk on item two? All right. All right, well, Commissioners, the recommendation from staff is that we continue this item to a.
Chair Quilisi.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have to close the public comment, or public hearing?
Public hearing, yes.
Public hearing on this item, okay. And staff's recommendation is to continue this item to a date not certain, to allow for continued processing of the application and questions and answers with the applicants. Any questions of staff on that? Okay. If not, could we have a motion regarding continuing this item? Vice Chair Nolan?
Sure, I'll go ahead. I'll make a motion that we continue design review permit, DRP 21-003. I don't think I need to read the entire description, but to a date not certain, and to allow re-noticing as well.
Okay.
That's it.
A second?
Second.
Very good, thank you. Any discussion? Sherry, call roll, please.
Quilisi.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Lottis.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Bennett.
Very good. On to item number three, another, excuse me, another public hearing item, this on the Rancho Inn and expansion of the Chief's Peak Bar, among other things. Any comment on that, Lucas?
Once again, staff is recommending continuation of this item to a date not certain, which would then allow for the item to be re-noticed to those property owners within a 300-foot radius, and for a legal ad to be provided. The, and that's, at this point, the reason why is because we're still working with that applicant on revising and coming to terms with some of those questions that were brought up initially, but then also working on some stuff in the background to get up to speed and make sure everybody's on the same page. So that's where we're at with that item.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Then could we have a motion with regard to item three?
Wait, there might.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Public comment?
I'd recommend reopening, opening public hearing.
Yep. If we have someone who wishes to speak, then the public hearing is appropriate. We'll open the public hearing at 6:13. And who's online to speak, Sherry?
Diane Vlasov.
Oh, Diane Vlasov, yes. Late of the Complete Streets Committee, I think. Please go ahead, Diane. Is she muted?
She is.
You are muted, Diane. Please take that off and then give us your thoughts in three minutes.
Space.
There you go.
Hey, hello, thank you for calling on me. Listen, I sent in my comment by email, and I didn't have access to listen to the meeting any other way, so I really only planned to listen.
All right, well, that's fine. We're not gonna be doing much with it tonight, except continuing it, I suspect, because there is still a lot of work to be done. I do recall that you commented by email on this at an earlier meeting as well.
Yeah, yeah, I did. Thank you very much for calling on me, and have a great night. Thanks to everybody. Bye.
All right, well, thank you very much. And then we'll close the public hearing. And does someone have a motion with regard to item three? Commissioner Nolan, or Vice Chair Nolan, excuse me.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine. Make a motion that we continue conditional use permit, CUP 21-001, and desire you permit, DRP 21-010, and continue the item to a date not certain, and allow for re-noticing, including the legal ad and 300-foot radius mailing to surrounding neighbors.
Okay.
Second.
Second, thank you very much. Any discussion? Sherry, please call a roll on item three.
Quilisi.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Lottis.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Bennett.
All right. Item four, a director's exemption and modification to minor conditional use permit regarding the Pinon Pizza Place. Lucas, would you take us through that?
Yes, thank you. Actually, this item is gonna be reviewed and presented by Mara McElora, our associate planner here.
Very good.
I think she's got a PowerPoint as well to kind of show an aerial.
Oh, all right, good.
When the time is right.
Thank you, Mara.
So Mara, if you could walk us through this staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Seibert, and Chair Quilisi and Commissioners, and welcome to Commissioner Bennett. So, the director's permit, DE 21012, and minor conditional use permit, CUP 06-03, which is an amendment. The project is located at 423 East Ojai Avenue, and there is a DE, which is director's exemption, to allow the sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption within a proposed outdoor dining facility, and the minor conditional use permit is required to adjust the outdoor seating configuration from what was previously approved for Jersey Mike's. And the new configuration includes different furniture in a different configuration, but as well an ABC alcohol beverage control required barrier that Jersey Mike's didn't require or have because they didn't serve beer or wine or other alcohol. The minor conditional use permit for Jersey Mike's is still in effect because once an establishment closes, there's still 180 days where the minor CUP is active, and if someone comes in with an application during that time, then.
It stays alive.
Then it stays alive, exactly, as opposed to having to get a new conditional use permit. So the, I'm gonna put the PowerPoint up so it can be referred to. There we go. Is that okay? Okay. I'll point to this during my presentation, but just so it's up for your viewing while I'm speaking. The Community Development Department is recommending approval of the reconfiguration of the dining area without the required barrier, and therefore, the consumption of alcohol would also not be permitted outside because they need the barrier, per ABC. The reason for that is that there's concern about the encroachment onto the pedestrian pathway. When Jersey Mike's was approved in 2006, there were four movable metal chairs, or, and table, sorry, there were four movable metal tables that projected out from the wall of the building approximately five feet, four inches, and that allowed for an approximate path of seven feet, seven inches. The current proposal does not include an increase in the approved number of seats, but it does include a reconfiguration and a change in the seating. It has fixed benches along the wall, and the rest of the furniture is movable, except for there would be a split wood, a split rail fence, railing, excuse me, which is required by ABC. And we, in working with the Building Department, it was identified during the review of the project that per the building code, there's a required path of travel within the outdoor dining facility with a minimum of four feet if the furniture is fixed and three feet if it's movable. That path is right here at three feet because the tables and perpendicular benches in this proposal are proposed to be movable. It's just these benches, the benches back here that are fixed. So the ABC barrier is proposed to be 42 inches high. It's wood split rail, as I already said, and it's designed to match the furniture. It's proposed to be opened but roped off on the east entry, and the rope is proposed to be a vinyl-coated galvanized steel cable with looped ends, and the east side of the fence down here at this end, it bends slightly toward the wall, and there's a four-foot opening here at the eastern end, which is a required opening for access by ABC. The proposed outdoor area with the barrier would project into the sidewalk approximately seven feet, three inches, and reduce the sidewalk area for pedestrian access from the originally approved seven feet, seven inches from Jersey Mike's to a new distance of about five feet, four inches, and we're talking about this area here. That's a reduction of about two feet from what was originally approved in 2006. So as you can see from this PowerPoint, also, there's a six-foot Caltrans access that's here. That is a minimum required access that starts at the face of curb and goes towards the building. And as proposed here in this proposal, at the eastern end and going a bit towards the west, there would only be five feet, four inches clear for pedestrian traffic. With this application, the applicant would be required to request an encroachment permit from Caltrans. The Community Development Department has concerns regarding the reduction in the sidewalk proposed at five foot, four inches from the originally approved seven feet, seven inches in '06, and staff's main concern is the pedestrian comfort and safety, especially at the pinch points, which is here at the west end, sorry, and also here where there's a tree well going towards the east. Let's see. And the reason for this is the ABC required barrier. So for this reason, staff is recommending to move forward with the proposed outdoor dining facility configuration, but not the ABC required barrier. The removal of the barrier would not allow for beer and wine to be served within the outdoor area, but the outdoor dining tables and benches in that configuration could remain as it is. And perhaps, within that presentation, I was, some of the questions that were asked by Chair Quilisi may have been answered. If not, please let me know, and of course, if anybody else has questions, I encourage them to ask them. Thank you.
Lucas?
Yeah, sure. If I could just put two cents worth in regarding public comments. We have received public comments regarding this item, both from Bill Miley, which came in, and from Ray Powers in regards to this item.
Yes.
And they were provided to the Commission as well prior to this meeting.
Thank you. As I heard your, well, first of all, are there questions for staff after this presentation? Any Commissioners?
They all do.
I've got a question. I was wondering, the question raised by Bill Miley about smoke or problems with wood-fired pizzas, pizza ovens, what happens to that?
Yeah, so I'll respond to that. So in terms of wood-fired pizza ovens, those are, so there's standards that are applied in LA County that basically prohibit them. However, in Ventura County, there are no such standards. Instead, they use the manufacturing specifications that are applied to each individual wood-fired apparatus. So in this case, through the permitting process through a building, there would be a requirement for them to provide that information for clarification.
Does that include things like spark arresters or heavy screens over the exhaust?
Yeah, if it's identified within the recommendations. And I believe the applicant could probably speak to that as well, because they are the ones that are installing it, and per the recommendations, they can probably speak specifically to what those recommendations are currently.
Okay, we'll get to the applicant and to public comment when the Commission is finished asking questions of staff. And I'm sorry, the pictures on the wall are too small for me now to tell if anyone out there wants to ask a question.
Commissioner Nolan had a question.
Commissioner Nolan, please go ahead.
Actually, we all do, at least all three of us.
There you go.
Yep.
Yeah, I had a question about the sidewalk width. So on the original CUP, if I understood this correctly, there was a seven-foot clearance between, let's say, the curb edge and the general proposed or existing dining area. Is that correct?
Yes, it was approximately seven feet and seven inches, about seven and a half feet.
Is that number specific to this site, or is that something consistent throughout at least the downtown area? That seven feet clearance on the sidewalk?
This is specific to this site. The sidewalk here widens as you move east.
Yeah.
The sidewalk isn't consistent on all of Ojai Avenue.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, and I'm gonna ask one question. If it's not appropriate now, we want to wait till after the applicant presents. You can just say so. But I, did the applicant look at any other configurations to accommodate the required barrier with the city, or is that something I should just wait and ask them?
Well, the applicant initially proposed a different configuration and has reduced it since we've worked with them, and they, I spoke with them very briefly this evening, and it sounds like they might even have another configuration. I'm not sure, I don't want to speak to that, but I also believe that they're willing to work with the Planning Commission.
I'm seeing a possible other one myself, but I'll wait until they present, and then I can dialogue then. Thank you.
That's it for now?
No, neither Commissioners have their hands up.
No, no, I understand. For Commissioner Nolan.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, Commissioner Lottis, please, go ahead.
Well, I just have one comment on the wood-fired oven, that the APCD, Air Pollution Control District, will have jurisdiction over that, and they will have to get a permit from them, so that should be fairly well-controlled and overseen by the Air Pollution Control District of Ventura County. But the question, so, so I know, so they, the previous tables that were in front, did they take up the same, I mean, did they, in terms of the extension from the face of the building, were they in approximately the same position? I mean, is there, was there, if you didn't look at the barrier and you're just looking at the tables, is that essentially a comparable configuration to what was there, and the size of the tables, so forth, the benches?
Jersey Mike's was encroaching from the building out towards the street approximately the same distance. It's different type of furniture, different look, different configuration, but they were coming out the same distance without the barrier.
Okay, okay. I think that's, I just, I was, I, let me just ask one more question. Is staff pretty confident about your assessment of where the front property line is along Ojai Avenue?
I'll answer that question, yes. We are very confident, yes.
Okay, and you've worked with the City Engineer Department, Public Works, too?
Yes, we've worked with Public Works directly on this.
Worked that out, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks, that's it for right now.
Trent?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I noticed on the, well, even on the PowerPoint presentation, the measurement from the first column on the west side, from, I think it's labeled C, to the street, there is a planter that's there, and I noticed that that wasn't identified anywhere. And I went out and measured it, and I know my measurements could be wrong, but from that column to the planter is about 7.3 feet. So I just wanted to see if anybody had measured that.
The east edge or the west edge of the building?
I'm sorry, the west, the narrow portion.
Yep.
I believe the planter to the west, on the west side, is further to the west than that post, and so it wasn't going directly, or maybe I, I'm gonna correct myself, we were measuring from the edge of the barrier, the ABC barrier, to the curb, and the edge of the ABC barrier is east of that.
Yes.
Tree well.
Correct, but that tree well is. Correct, but that tree well is, if you, basically as a pedestrian, you'd have to do an S curve in order to walk around the tree with that.
I think, I think I see what you're saying. If, so the edge of the barrier, if that was pointing west towards the tree, there's, there's a, a little pinch there, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty significant. And I was just curious if anybody had mapped that out or if that was anywhere. I haven't seen it, but it's there.
Is that a former tree well or what?
No, it's an existing tree well. And I, uh, the applicant may be able to speak to it more specifically, but I, I recall it being more than five feet, four inches from that tree well, which is the reason why it was not included within this, because it was beyond kind of that four feet or five feet, four inches that we've identified.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Trent, anything more?
No, that was it. I appreciate it.
I, I have a few, uh, like you, I went out with a tape measure this afternoon and I read in the administrative report that the edge of the public right-of-way is five feet from the curb face. Not the seven feet, seven inches portrayed on one drawing or another, but five feet. So I went to the curb face, measured five feet in, and then along a line parallel to the curb there, measured distances to the building. At the very west edge, it was about six feet where the, where the pillar is extended out. And it's about seven plus to the part of the wall where the windows are. And as you move eastward, the distance obviously increases, you can see that on the drawing. It's about 11 feet to that five foot from the curb face line. And I'm wondering if, if there were an ABC barrier installed, could it not be installed at five feet from the curb face? Because that's the end of the public right-of-way and it would be on private property. Is it, am I missing something there or is that correct?
Let's see if this answers your question. Lucas, go ahead and take that.
So there's a couple of different ways that you can look at that. So there is a, there is a five-foot right-of-way.
Yep.
Right, that's taken from the face of curb towards the, towards the building. And that is for the Ojai Avenue specifically. Um, and then includes the street, turning lanes, sidewalk, uh, landscape improvements. That's why you see the tree wells, um, kind of in a, a square pattern.
So that's the edge of the public right-of-way.
And that's where, that's where it ends. Caltrans also has a standard that speaks to six feet of, of passageway essentially. So because this is Caltrans-maintained, Ojai Avenue is Caltrans-maintained, that there, if, if there's an encroachment within that six feet, there's an encroachment permit required separate of what we're reviewing here tonight.
Okay, so that would be a Caltrans encroachment.
Be a Caltrans encroachment, exactly. The, um, the distance that, that you would require, require, um, in terms of access, safe access, would it be at least five feet? And that's why we're looking at these distances from the edges of, of planter areas to where the barriers are at versus where, um, potentially where the, um, the tables and chairs are gonna be located as well. Because we're looking at a, a reasonable location or distance, um, for, for passengers to, to traverse along the sidewalk.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Uh, well, not completely. If, if an ABC barrier were to be erected anywhere in this area, would it, would it be legal without a Caltrans encroachment permit to erect at six feet from the curb face?
I, I would say from a safety standpoint, we would want at least five feet. That does allow for pinch points, more, uh, more narrow in terms of like up to four feet. Uh, and that's through Public Works in terms of how we've been reviewing that. Typically with something like this, knowing how busy, um, Ojai Avenue is, especially in the sidewalk area, we're looking for maximum widths in this case.
That's why I asked about six feet. If the barrier were six feet from the curb face, would there be any, any restriction on that in terms of city regulations?
I think our comfort zone was seven feet, seven inches. That's where we were at before. That's our current comfort zone, I would say. Now, what's interesting is if you look at the history of this site, the outdoor dining really hasn't been in play for several years. Uh, I think the last time that Jersey Mike's had it out was, well, before I started here, obviously. Uh, so it hasn't been out there. So it's been this open area, um, for several years. This is a change to what we're looking at, right?
I agree. I'm, I'm just trying to, trying to establish the parameters of what's possible.
Sure.
In that area.
Sure, so it's, it's definitely being impacted. I think what we're trying to do, at least here with staff, is we're trying to ensure that there's a safe passageway. And I think five feet as a minimum from, and I would say that's even a pinch point, five or six feet is the, is, is really the, the minimum we're looking at here.
Five feet's the edge of the public right-of-way, six feet is the edge of, Caltrans cares about it.
Right.
And right now, it sounds like seven feet, seven inches is the edge of where the city cares about it.
And that's, and that's what was originally approved and that's why we're here tonight.
That was what was approved for Jersey Mike's.
Correct.
Right, yeah, okay.
Chair Quilisi?
This is probably more appropriate to ask the, the applicant or the applicant's representative, but it looks to me like there's a lot more space for tables at the east end of this slightly triangular area than at the west end. And it looks to me from the drawing as though an ABC barrier could be put up to separate the west end of this triangular area from that seven-foot, seven-inch line back from the curb face. But we'll get back into that, I guess, when we have other people up here to talk.
Chair Quilisi?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. Um, the plan that we have in our packet is poorly marked as far as the dimensions go.
Yes.
I remember seeing seven feet, seven inches somewhere and I can't find it on the drawings, so.
So earlier, we had, um, a plan that was, uh, marked fairly decently, I believe, more so than the one in our packet. Would it be possible before you call up the applicant to do the, uh, this would probably be Lucas or Mora, um, do a screen share so that we could look at it again and I could just, I want to confirm the numbers that I am jotting down to what you actually had on that plan.
I remember that seven feet, seven inches has been mentioned a couple of places, but I don't now know where it was I saw it.
Yeah, so if, if, would that be possible, just to have that plan up for a couple of minutes so that the commission, or at least I would like to just look at it again, make a couple of notes prior to the applicant coming up, just so that I'm clear about the dimensions? Is that a possibility?
It is a possibility, however, technology is, is being extremely snoozy in terms of uploading the PowerPoint again.
Okay, well, while you're in process with.
Um, you know what I could do if, uh, staff, if you have access to that plan and we don't, if I asked you, um, for a couple of locations, could you, uh, give us the numbers just verbally and then I could write that down?
I think so.
Okay, all right, let me, let me try to do my best here. Um, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go, uh, east to west. So if you start on the east side and the, you look at the proposed, uh, barrier, ABC barrier, there's a point where it, it angles? And my plan says five feet, looks like four and five eighths inches, is that correct?
Five feet, four inches.
That's correct there?
Yes.
Okay, let me just.
Can I just add, uh, are you looking at sheet, uh, page three of six, Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, so that's good. And then, um, if you go to the west end of the proposed barricade, what is that dimension?
Five feet, four inches from the, um, barrier to the face of curb at the west end.
Oh, so it's the same number?
Right, well, on the east end, what you're looking at is from the, um, barrier to the tree well.
Very, okay, that's what I didn't have and, and it wasn't reflected. Okay, thank you. All right, so it's five, four and it's consistent. Okay, and, um.
Yeah, the tree well doesn't show on the drawings.
The tree well on the east end.
Yeah.
It's a little square.
Oh, is that, those are the tree wells on page two, the site plan, page two?
Right, the best, um, the best plan was the, is the PowerPoint that's making, having an issue.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there's two tree wells, but only one is marked.
One is only on, on page three, but there's two on page two, or of attachment D. Um, I think, I think that answered my question for the moment. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let me see, where were we here? In the admin report, page four and attachment A, page two, it talks about an exterior alteration of the pinion space requiring a DE. First of all, are we, are we voting on a DE tonight? Was your previous DE appealed?
Yeah, so there's, there's actually two phases to this DE. The first DE was for the interior, for the interior seating. That was a separate, um, process, uh, both council and commission were notified of that. This is, would typically be a director's exemption handled at staff level. Staff then kicked this up, the director, myself, kicked this up for planning commission consideration, given the context to the surrounding area and its interface with, um, Ojai Avenue.
Okay, I, I read that it said an exterior alteration of the space requires a DE. What, what is that exterior alteration? Is that placing tables?
The exterior alteration is, yes, for the DE, it's, um, it's for the tables and it's for the fixed seating, for, for the whole project.
Okay, this, this is for having tables of a different material than were previously approved there?
The, the design and configuration and the fact that they will be attached, some of them are attached to the wall, and then also the alcohol-related issue, those are the reasons for the DE.
But your recommendation is not to allow alcohol sales outside the building?
The recommendation is to not allow the barrier, um, which encroaches so much further into the sidewalk than previously approved. And without the barrier, there would be no alcohol.
Right, but there would still be a need for a DE.
Right, because the outdoor dining is different from the dining that was approved previously.
Because the tables and chairs are a different version than what was there previously.
They're a different version and different configuration and attached, some of the benches are attached to the building.
Okay, and that is what the requested modification to the MCUP is?
Yes.
Okay. Um, on attachment A, this is the resolution now, page one, the fifth, whereas it says, "Permit for outdoor dining is conditionally allowed within," and so on, so on. I, I did not understand what that meant. Could you clarify?
Can you tell me which number it is that, um, of your questions? I think you had, you had 13.
This is attachment A, page one, I'm sorry, page one, the fifth, whereas, the last whereas on that page, uh, line four, it says, "Conditionally allowed within and would not impair the integrity and character of the subject zoning dist, district." What, um, this, outdoor dining, and, and we've been around this tree a few times, outdoor dining as defined in the code is dining, it's restaurant seating in the public right-of-way. Is there any restaurant seating here proposed in the public right-of-way?
I'm gonna let you take that.
It is not, there is not. However, you're talking about outdoor dining requiring a CUP handled through Public Works, um, and more specifically, the Public Works Director processing that, processing that. Still comes to this commission. This is instead a outdoor dining facility on private property and then requires a minor conditional use permit. That's identified with an Article 24 of the municipal code. So that's the distinction between the two.
It's, yeah, it's listed, listed there but not defined.
Right, I don't want, I, yeah, and I don't necessarily want to get into the weeds on something like this. I know this commission has, has gone around and around regarding outdoor dining and I know it's a Title X, uh, cleanup item that we've talked about, uh, on a couple of different occasions. For what we're talking about here, for consistency purposes, in terms of how we've handled it in the past with other applications that have gone forward, this is a minor conditional use permit for outdoor dining facilities.
And so, um, it's differentiated, and I think we, we've gone over this again, like as Lucas said, but the, the key really point is that in 2004, the conditional use permit for outdoor dining facilities, I think is, it would be correct, was taken away unless located within the public right-of-way. Now for outdoor dining facilities such as we have here, a minor conditional use permit is required. However, anytime it's in the public right-of-way, you still go, then it kicks back up into the conditional use permit.
Um, I think that's, that's the last of my questions at this point. Any, any go-backs from any commissioners, questions for staff?
I just have, uh, follow, some follow-up questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Or, um, to, to clarify the use then also, so they've, this location has never had beer sale of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine, ever, right? It used to be a.
There used to be a micro brewery there, in fact.
Right.
Before Jersey Mike's.
But with Jersey Mike's, there was not, they were, they were not doing, this is a new, this is a new, um, issuance of beer and wine, correct?
This is a new one because Jersey Mike's did not have one, but there were two restaurants previous that did have, uh, beer and wine. One was the, the brewery that was just mentioned and before that, there was a Nora's Restaurant. I believe they had.
Okay, but, but the relevant fact is that it's, that it's new and could you, would you explain why it's allowed with, with no permit other than, I mean, it's, there's been, there's no review by the planning commission to allow that? Could you just, would you just, I, I know what it is, but I would like you to explain.
So I, I'm sorry.
But it's clear.
You want to know why there's.
How, how are they allowed to have beer and wine sales? How is it?
Well, they can have beer and wine sales subject to the discretionary permit of the director's, the director's exemption. So it is.
Yes, I'll just, I'll just step in here. I know, I, I know we've talked about this before. The director's exemption is the process by which you look at an intensification of potential parking. And that's really what drives the review and use of alcohol. Um, it's not a CUP, it's a director's exemption. Um, and it's been processed by more than one, um, application for alcohol in recent memory.
Well, it, it, so based on, um, uh, previous applications in the downtown, the, the C1 Zone allows as a permitted use, uh, well, it's used as an old-fashioned term of onsite rather than on sale, but, uh, I think that the attorney, city attorney said that was, it's been interpreted that that is onsite is the same as on sale alcoholic beverage and that's a permitted use. I, I just want to make it clear to everybody on the commission that the, this change and the issuance of, of approval for, uh, beer and, beer and wine is listed as a permitted use in the, in the, in the code. There is absolutely no discretion whatsoever allowed here. Is that correct?
The discretion is the director's exemption. That's, that's discretionary. Simply applying for it doesn't guarantee approval. So there is, there is.
Where in the code does it make, does it make the sale of beer and wine as director exemption though? I don't, I don't see that.
It's instead brought forward as a potential increase in the required parking, uh, demand and that's, that's identified with an Article 20.
So, okay, well, I, I'll, I'll speak to that a little bit more with our discussions. So, um, and, and I did have one quest, one more question. Exactly what is the material of the table and chairs? It says it's a wood finish, but what is the actual material?
I'm gonna let the applicant speak to that when, when their, when their time is up, if that's okay.
Okay, thanks, thank you. Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Commissioner Lotis, just on the material, there is a section in the staff report that covers, um, what the design guidelines say, which are the East Ojai Avenue Design Guidelines. And so, um, they don't specifically address furniture on private property, but traditional opposed to contemporary style is, is the, is the, is the guideline recommendation. And these guidelines are not binding.
Yes, but the, but materials are definitely part of any kind of, uh, well, are we even doing design review here? We're doing a director's exemption, but not a design review? Is that, is that right? It's, it really is a little, uh, a little confusing.
No, it includes design review with this as well, absolutely, because the findings within a director's exemption, which is also a part of a DRP, uh, demand specific findings to be made. So yes.
I'm trying to find my first page here. Um, okay, modification to minor CUP, and director's exemption. Okay, I don't really see anything about design review, but, uh, any kind of review like this should, should allow us to know what the materials actually are.
Right, there, there is a color and material board in the packet following the, the site drawings.
Right, I saw that, but it says material, it says wood.
I suggest we ask the applicant about it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's great.
All right, any other questions for staff? Then Sheri, let's hear from the applicant. Please come forward, identify yourself.
Do I need to press a button here?
No, because you're the applicant. We're not gonna time you. You have more than three minutes.
Okay, wonderful. Um, I just wanna, I'm Jeremy Albin. Uh, this is Tony Mont and Sally Slade. Uh, we're the owners and operators of Pinion Restaurant, uh, and we just want to start by saying thank you so much for allowing us this time today, and that we're extremely grateful for all the work of Maura, Lucas, Sheri, and Cheryl, who isn't here today, um, so far in this process. Um, there were a lot of questions raised in the discussion that I'd be happy to get to after this brief statement, but I just wanted to walk you through an initial timeline of kind of where we're at in the project at this juncture. So, our initial conversation with the Ojai Planning Office began in early April of this year, and in the two months of conversation between Sally, who's been spearheading our permitting project, and the members of the planning office, we were encouraged to apply for a director's exemption for our new doorway, wine and beer license, and altered outdoor seating. After several rounds of edits, we received verbal assurances from the planning office that our DE application, sorry, was correctly filled out and would be approved without a prolonged period of review. However, after submitting the application on June 8th, we didn't hear back from the office until it reopened in person in early August. At the end of August, we were then informed that based on concerns of the office, we would split our initial proposal into a DE application and a DRP review, which is where, um, Commissioner Lotis, I think some of the confusion is happening is that we initially started with just a DE, and then this DRP section was added on later on, which is, was confusing for us at the time as well. Um, so after that, um, our initial hearing date was set for September 15th, which I believe is in the administrative report, um, but on September 9th, we had a conversation with, uh, Planning Director Lucas Seibert, uh, where they raised questions about, um, our initial outdoor seating proposal, which included planters, which were, uh, more, I guess, obtrusive to the public right-of-way. Um, within 24 hours of that conversation, we submitted a new rendering and design from our architects, um, but because they apparently were too late in the day on Friday, um, we were pushed to this session. Um, and I understand that documents need to be submitted before the weekend, so people have a time for appropriate review, but this was just a circumstance where, had we known the deadline was there, we would have been happy to work any timeline to get edits back and make this as expedient a process as possible. So we wanted to bring this snippet of our timeline to your attention, um, to illustrate that, uh, really every juncture, we've been more than willing to address the concerns of the planning office, and every turn we've adopted our plans to the next set of concerns that have been raised. Um, we believe that our current plan is in full accordance with the city's right-of-way, ABC and ADA guidelines, and that we now require a simple encroachment permit from Caltrans. So to address this encroachment, um, which is at the six-foot point, um, it would be entirely possible to propose a new plan that takes the eight inches, which is the, I believe, the eastern pinch point in the tree well is the five-foot four point. The western tree well point, actually to my measurement, is 102 inches or eight foot six, which is well outside of that boundary. But the eastern tree well has a big gap of, you know, dirt, and what other establishments have done in the city like Ozzy or Ojai Roadie that have similar tree wells have filled in with concrete or brick to eight foot inches at no detriment to the tree, and we would easily be at that six-foot point for Caltrans, which from your question, Chair Quillsey, I believe is the kind of confusing factor, is if it's the five-foot city, you know, boundary, or the six-foot Caltrans right-of-way. But it would be easy to comply with the Caltrans right-of-way just simply by adding some more material in the sidewalk, which we'd be happily to do at our own expense, obviously. Just to illustrate what this loss means for us, um, the loss of beer and wine sales in this area would represent a 6.25% loss of our projected yearly sales, which is equivalent to $65,533. Uh, the significance of this loss impacts our ability to pay high wages to our employees, to offer health benefits, to purchase local produce, and to give back to the Ojai community. Not to mention the loss of taxable sales coming back to Ventura County and the city of Ojai. We're a small business. Um, sorry, I'm feeling a little emotional because this is really our baby, you know, like this is the board of directors. This is the ownership of this business, is these three young people who have families in this community and want to grow here. Um, you know, if we were in it to make money, we probably wouldn't be in the hospitality business. We're in it to support local artisans and to feed people. Um, and this process already has had a significant cost to us, and we can also only imagine the amount of hours of labor that city officials have spent going back and forth with us on this proposal. So it's our hope that through this process, we've demonstrated our continued flexibility and compliance with planning guidelines, and are willing to further adopt our proposal to address the concerns of the planning commission. We cannot, however, afford to lose out on a significant proportion of sales and believe that this proposal is in full compliance with city guidelines, ABC regulations, and is fully ADA accessible. We are excited about being part of the business community in Ojai and would sincerely like to address all concerns from the city and the public. We are open and willing to comply with any and all recommendations from this commission, but we need a clear path moving forward, as our experience so far has unfortunately lacked transparency or clear guidelines to meet. We'd like to thank the planning office again for their continued work and the planning commission for their time today, and we're looking to forward, uh, to working with you all and seeing you in our restaurant for hopefully years to come. Thank you.
Please stay there.
Yeah.
Any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Uh, one thing that was mentioned was the material of the chairs and tables.
Yeah, so I can speak to that. The material is all ash wood. Uh, we're working with a friend of Tony's actually, who has a, a studio called Southern Grain Craftsman in Santa Cruz. They're, they make beautiful woodwork, and it's all with wood from the northern and central coast. So this is handcrafted, custom-built ash wood benches and tables. And the fence material that we proposed as well would be a similarly, it's hard to find ash two-by-fours, but the stain would be to color-match the tables and the benches as well. And that's also coherent with the indoor furniture, as well as the same material and artisan-made.
Okay.
There is also, should I wait, or should I just go through the, you know, oven questions and all these other things? I'm happy to speak on that as well.
Stay where you are, if you would, please. Uh, Vice Chair Nolan, please.
You know, I think, John, you were ahead of me, so you'll go first, and then I'll go. I saw your hand go up before mine.
Oh, that's okay. I, I think this was brought up before, but I just was curious while we have the applicant here. Um, has there been discussion of potentially moving the, the wall and the seating back toward the east of the building where there's, uh, where there's more space?
Um, I think our property line actually stops only a few feet after that further eastern door, so there wouldn't really be room, and we wanted to take advantage of the window bays in order to not encroach further on the sidewalk. Um, and also, the property incline, the property line does not include that parking lot that's run by, um, uh, the Ojai Women's, the Women's Center, so we didn't want to encroach on their space as well, and we know that that's a parking lot that receives heavy use from them, so we're trying to stay away from there. And also, the ABC guidelines require that we enclose fully that area and a serviceable door. Um, and it just made more sense to us to put that closer to both doorways as opposed to having it further east and off of our property line.
You couldn't, I don't think you could put things east of your property line, but...
No.
As Commissioner Trent said, there is, there is more space between the building and the sidewalk at the east side of the property.
But the, the complicating factor here, to me, seems like it's this eastern tree well, because that's where the pinch point of five foot four inches is, is on the, between the eastern tree well and the railing. So if we were to move the seating area farther east, we would be in greater contact with that tree well as opposed to just being, you know, on the corner of it, on the western corner of the tree well. Do you see that?
Yeah, my, my concern is the, the western, uh...
Your concern is, yeah, so the, on the western side, the, like I said, the distance from the column is, you know, over 11 feet to the front edge of the curb, and from my measurement, the, you know, it's a diagonal because it's not directly, you know, perpendicular, but from the edge of the fence line, the proposed fence to the curb there, is to my, our measurement, 102 inches, or eight, eight, eight foot six. It's the eastern tree well where we were informed and can observe that there's a pinch point of five foot four, which is already within the city right-of-way, and we'd be happy to propose another plan that fills in part of that to also meet the Caltrans right-of-way. Um, but we're also more than happy if the city approves our proposal to just go and get a permit from them. I think that's a pretty common thing that happens on East Ojai Avenue from talking with other business owners about having to get Caltrans approval. Um, and I guess I would just note as well that that intersection is also, we've been informed is under review from Caltrans anyways, because there's not a ADA accessible ramp on that corner, um, on the southern or nor northern side of the street, so...
This is at Montgomery you're talking about?
This is at Montgomery and East Ojai, and so, you know, the curb is kind of, uh, not ADA accessible at all, so we're trying to build as accessible a zone we can within this, um, area, um, which is why the, uh, fence, the fence could jut out less, but we want an ADA accessible, you know, area so people with disabilities could dine in that area with us.
Yeah, the three feet, okay.
Commissioner Trent?
Um, yeah, I just, again, I, I would love to see some sort of, um, it seems like we've got measurements all over the place. I would love to see some sort of measurement with that tree well on the western side, because it's very close to the building. It's right by the, um, you know, the crosswalk, um, and as people go across the crosswalk and they turn left, they gotta walk between the building and the tree well, and now there's gonna be a door proposed. If that door is open, then you got an encroachment there, and if there's, you know, a wall there, then there's another encroachment. It makes, it makes it so pedestrian, it'll most likely have to do an S, meaning they'll have to walk around the, the...
Is that, I'm, Commissioner Trent, maybe you can clarify for me. For, at our perspective, the railway that we're proposing to add doesn't extend to the edge of that tree well, and so I'm, I guess, kind of confused why, I don't think there's any additional, I agree with you that that is a tight corner around that western tree well, but I don't think our current proposal adds a new, um, obstacle to crossing the right-of-way in that area.
Yeah, it just seems the, the path, and it's, it's just very, makes it a very narrow path for, you know, two people to walk down.
Yeah, that, that measurement is beyond the six-foot right-of-way, and I, I hear the concerns from Commissioner, or sorry, Planning Director Seibert on having a maximum right-of-way, because that is a, you know, a busy corner, but, um, you know, all, it seems like the approval of many other businesses in the area has been compliant with that six-foot Caltrans right-of-way, so I hope they were subject to the same regulations.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Yes, um, so I had, I had a couple of questions. Well, first of all, I wanted to say thank you for coming forward with the project, and, you know, it's really exciting. But, um, I'm wondering, do you happen to have a photo or something that can be shared? Maybe we could see it, you know, via Zoom and then those, the, the...
Yeah, I believe there...
Of any of your furniture. It sounds beautiful, but I don't have any idea of like, you know, other than the type of wood, which I'm familiar with, what it's going to look like, and because especially you're gonna be building those outdoor benches, um, and the tables are there. And I do want to say, I'm all in favor of outdoor dining, so...
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to your outdoor dining at all, but I, you know, we do need to look and see what it looks like. And then I think a big concern is, and Commissioner Trent said, and we've all kind of, uh, said this early on, we might need a plan that, that's actually, um, better detailed with callouts that shows the pathway, the, the Caltrans six feet, the public right-of-way, then the pinch points. Um, it just might be, I mean, generally, I'm looking at it, and I'm okay, and I'm, you know, I'm not completely understanding this, the one that Commissioner Trent's talking about, but I have an idea.
Yeah, I'm...
But it's, at least you have clarity, um, you know, for making a decision on something.
Absolutely, and we, we have samples of the wood and furniture. It's, it's, you know, it's currently being built, but we have, one, I believe there was a rendering provided that gives, you know, an idea of the general shape, and also, we can send, uh, we have at this point, a photo of the actual benches themselves, so we're happy to send that info along right now to the staff, and as well, I'm a little confused as well, because we had a more detailed, um, plan for the area with callouts that we sent along to staff, and that doesn't seem like the one that ended up in the presentation, so hopefully that document is also accessible to you, because we went through this process with staff onsite, with Planning Director Lucas calling out these areas and noting them down. So we've been through the process with them, and hopefully that information is being relayed.
Okay, so that's something we may get to see tonight, which I hope, hope we do. I think, yeah, that'll, that would help. Um, I think, oh, and the other question that I had was, um, did you try, um, different layouts, um, that may accommodate these pinch points better to, to actually allow more than five foot four inches? I mean, I know there's constraints here. There's side, definitely side constraints, so...
Well, the, we, we are willing to accommodate whatever situation allows us. I mean, I think that's been part of the confusion and frustration on our part, is it seems like there's continued concern, but no clear guideline of what the standard to be met is as far as how much space needs to be available.
Oh, that's great.
And, thank you. Um, and we, we, you know, as long as we're able to have those sales, we'll go with any configuration, but, um, the process of, is this better, there are new concerns. Is this better, there are new concerns, is kind of, is lengthy, and it feels like that we're not getting much guidance from the city on how we can actually meet these guidelines, because it seems like there's actually confusion on if the guideline is the city code of five feet, or if it's the Caltrans of six feet. So it just, we're willing to work with whatever we need to do, but we just need to be told, you know, what is the standard we're trying to meet.
Well, it's, if, if I'm understanding it right, it sounds like a minimum of five feet for the city of Ojai public right-of-way, and then in addition, because it's a state highway, you have to deal with Caltrans, and theirs is the six feet. If your ABC fencing or the furniture went into that space, you would have to get an encroachment permit in Caltrans. And so we're just, I, I think at this point, we're just trying to be clear on what you're presenting, um, so that we can make a, you know, a conscious, uh, you know, have good dialogue and make a decision. So that's what all the questions are about, too. So just trying to understand it. Um, one other question. Um, I'm not saying this is gonna have, have to happen, um, but it's a consideration, if, you know, if one of these pinch, pinch points, especially on the west side, was an issue, would you be open if you had to eliminate one of the tables?
Yeah, if we had to eliminate that front table, we, we, I think, could speak for the three of us. If we need to lose that front table, uh, I think that could be a comment. I mean...
I'm gonna hope you don't, but I, I'm just looking at the layout.
If, if on the west side, that's the issue, then yeah, we would happily accommodate that, but from our measurements, it, it seems like the actual... But from our measurements, it, it seems like the actual pinch point is on the east side. Because as you can see from this rendering, the, the distance from the western railing to the, I guess you can't really see because the tree wells aren't included, but the, the pinch point that I believe Commissioner Trent was talking about is from the edge of the column to the tree well. And it's actually a bigger distance from the edge of the railing to the tree well.
So I think his concern was, and it's not clearly marked on here, but you may have to do a little bit of a, you know, an S turn when you're walking, although I could see you would have a direct path. And if I understand correctly, and I got this information earlier, the pinch point on the east from the, the railing where there's a, an angle to the edge of the tree well is five four, but it's consistent with the five four on the west side. So there's consistency there, correct?
I don't think so. Actually, I think that the pinch point is the, is the narrowest point on the eastern end. And then it widens, the dis, because it's, the building is not plumbed to this widening curb. So there's more distance.
Right, right.
Because the tree well juts out farther into the, that channel than the rest of the sidewalk heading, you know, westward. So I actually, the distance from the front of the fence to the sidewalk at its shortest point is five four at that tree well and extends from there.
Right, but let me ask you this. And so this, because you're right, because it wasn't dimensioned on our plan, that's where the, some of this confusion is. And visually, and there's not a scale on the plan either, so I couldn't really measure it off. But visually, it looks wider and I'd asked this question earlier and maybe I misunderstood and got it wrong. So I understand the five foot four from the tree well to the pinch point on the east. But on the west side, if I go to the west edge of the fencing or the barrier and I go to the edge of the public right of way, what, what is that number?
That, the number is larger than six feet. I mean, I, I, one, I think, I mean, I asked for clarity, clarity from staff, but you sent us back a review of this plan and we responded with a series of measurements to meet those. So I'm, I think Tony has it again and we're happy to resend those, but we,
That would be, that would be really helpful.
We have all those numbers and they were in an initial plan that somehow didn't end up in this presentation.
And I have one other comment, and that was about the tree well. You mentioned about putting concrete in there potentially or.
Or brick.
And like some sort of hardscape material. I, I think the better solution would be to look at the, I mean, the trees, all of our streets have a minimum tree well, which is pretty tight. And you, you don't want to, we're not, we don't want to lose the, the trees. So it may be something, which I don't always like tree grates, but you can get them so they expand. It might be something like that, that's ADA accessible.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great suggestion. It was just a proposal.
Yeah, but I just wanted to throw that out if.
Yeah, thank you for that suggestion.
While we're in this discussion here. And it would be great if you could email the plan and they could show it to us with the dimensions.
Totally.
That would be one really good.
Okay, any other questions from commissioners? I have a couple. This, for, I'm sorry. Yes, Commissioner Lottis, please. We're losing your audio.
So, so, uh-oh, it must be my.
You're back on, Kathy?
You're back.
You're back now.
Okay. Um, I had trouble with it this afternoon.
We have you now.
Okay, I just wondered why, why, is there a need for three doors? I'm just, I, I, is that absolutely mandatory? Or why exactly are we doing, are you doing three doors?
The, the doorway was actually already approved through a director's exemption. The new doorway was approved in a previous DE and we received the, we, the idea of adding that initial door was that by the time you get to the eastern Ojai Avenue door, you're in the bathroom of the building. And the, the, I guess, western facing door on the parking lot side receives minimal foot traffic and is also joined by a parking lot. So it's not entirely, you know, convenient or safe place to enter the building and so we. Yes, so, okay, so there's two, so two, and an additional reason why we added this other door is from the ABC because they want one door committed to service and one door committed to entry. So our service door is farther down the eastern side of the sidewalk. And our entry door that we already constructed and was approved by the director's exemption is that new door on the corner of the building. So we want to increase access to the building there, meet the ABC requirements. Yeah, and just make that plaza more accessible.
It's already in place. It's already, it's already better.
It's already in place.
Yes.
And just another question, what, so, so I see the squares for the tables, but there's an additional smaller rectangle. It's not, what is, now what is that?
That's a bench.
Okay, so there's two, two of those benches.
What's that?
And there's two of those sides of benches, correct?
This is on page three of your site drawing.
Yes, there, there are two of those sides of benches and they're movable in case we want to accommodate someone with movement disabilities or if we want to accommodate a bigger party, they're there so that we have some modular flexibility with the seating in that area.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood everything. But I do agree that having a better dimensioned site plan, I think, is, is really necessary. And, and the problem is, you know, we need site plans that are vetted through staff, so.
And fully labeled.
Fully labeled, but, but we don't accept things really directly from the applicant.
Yeah, so the, the difference I'm seeing in this site plan, and you can see it visually, is that where the five foot four ABC barrier to face of curb, that's in the wrong location. That should be five foot four ABC barrier to the tree well on the eastern side. And then as you can see, the distance is actually longer traveling eastward from the curb of the sidewalk to the, yeah, it's about, it's about seven to eight feet there. So we didn't, that dimension is just in the wrong place. That dimension should be right there where the mouse is currently. And the dimension from the edge of the barrier to the curb is much, is almost two feet longer than five foot four.
Okay, can, can we leave this, can we leave this drawing up because I have some questions?
Yeah.
Related to the same drawing, which is not the same as what's in the package.
Right.
Can you tell me, staff? Quite all right. Have to clarify things on that side before we're going to get it to this side. I see two lines parallel to the curb. Both of those are not on page three of six of Attachment B.
That's correct.
Could you say what those, there is a black sort of dotted line and a red dashed line. What are those?
So the one that's above is actually green and that is.
Green, I'm sorry.
That's the Caltrans access.
That's the six foot from the curb face?
Exactly. And the red one is the public right of way, which is five feet from face of curb.
That measurement though is not, where the green line is in this drawing is not to scale. But by almost what looks like a foot of distance. Because I think it was drawn to scale assuming that it's five foot four from the edge of the eastern barrier to the curb, but that's an incorrect measurement. The distance from that point is more than six feet and the actual pinch point is on the eastern side at five four. And you can kind of see visually where the discrepancy is as the eastern tree well juts out farther, you know, farther south than the curb does on the western side. Does that provide some clarity?
That helps some. I'm, I'm not sure why, in, in one drawing, it seems to me, we had, we had the, the barrier, I guess that's a barrier, that's an ABC barrier there.
Yes.
Portrayed, sort of an L-shaped thing.
Yes.
On your page one of Attachment B, that your site drawing, it shows that barrier ending before, let's call it the third pier, the third pillar from the west. And this page three shows the barrier going all the way over, close to, it has to be close to the fourth pillar from the west or the easternmost pillar. Do we have any drawing that shows either of those? Okay, page two of Attachment B agrees with, agrees with page one.
Also, just to, to give you.
Page three is different.
To get, can I give you some perspective as well? The distance between, this is a two-scale, so the lines that have been added are not to scale, but the actual dimensional drawing is to scale of where the furniture is and where the partition fence is. The distance between the wall of the building, the window, and the edge of the fence is seven foot three. So there's no way that the distance between the edge of the fence and the curb at that western point is five foot four. It's, it's bigger than that.
I measured, I measured from your fourth pillar to the five foot from the curb face line, and that was more like 11 feet.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. There's, there's significant distance there.
Just, just for clarification, while you're still here, sir, I want to ask from staff, see if I understand the rules that are proposed here. The city's right of way is along a line five feet from the curb face.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
I'm sorry?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, Caltrans wants an extra foot.
Yes, that's correct.
For reasons I don't yet understand, but don't need to right now. You're saying on a, on top of the Caltrans, additional space right of way for, for pedestrians, the city wants another foot and a half.
The city is.
To total seven feet, seven inches.
Yes, the city is comfortable with that being safe for pedestrian.
Is the, is the city, is the city asking for seven feet, seven inches all along Ojai Avenue for other businesses that are there and trying to keep other businesses from using any space within seven feet, seven inches of the curb face?
Yeah, so just to respond to that, it's not a case by case scenario. In this case.
I understand.
We're looking at it from the standpoint of, of five feet to six feet being a comfort, comfort zone.
Right, okay.
Now, obviously, Jersey Mike's, oh, hold on. Jersey Mike's identified seven feet, seven inches, but that was without a barrier. That was literally eight chairs, two tables.
Jersey Mike's asked for less space on the outside of the building.
Right, this is a different configuration.
Right.
Thus, we're looking at it from a different standpoint. So it's, it's unique from the standpoint of how we're reviewing this one. It's, it's not necessarily entirely fair to compare other sites, given the context of those sites.
You provided us a site comparison in your initial review of this that included the restaurants Hakane, Ozu and Ojai Roadie. So today I went and measured the distances from those building faces to the curb. At Ozu, where they had tables, was a four foot, five inch gap for outdoor dining with full liquor sales that didn't include any ADA, any ABC barrier. Additionally, Ojai Roadie is a six foot gap, also smaller than seven foot seven, for dining with beer and wine. And they also don't have the ABC required barrier there. So it seems like this metric is completely case by case or inconsistent along the avenue.
So just to speak to Ozu, Ozu is, is unique. You've got to talk to ABC why they didn't require the barrier. I have no idea why. The, Ojai Roadie, they do have a barrier. If you look, they have a fence.
There's tables outside of the fence.
Hold on, I'm, I'm responding. They have a very clear barrier between the restaurant and the, and the outdoor area, correct? So this one is, is unique in terms of how it's being handled as well.
That's a misportrayal though of the material situation, which is that there are tables outside of that barrier there that are not in the ADA and they're also within six feet. So not only is it not consistent from an ABC perspective, it's also not consistent from a right of way perspective along the avenue.
You're talking about the benches that are on the other side?
No, there's full picnic tables outside of Ojai, Ojai Roadie, outside of that.
Smaller picnic tables, yes.
Which, which are within six feet of the right of way. There's a public trash can there that is a pinch point. And, and it's triple the capacity. It's, it's, each of those tables sits eight people. You're talking about having 24 people outside of an ABC area within the public right of way. We're talking about having 12 people at maximum, eight people at, in this, in this, in this portrayal within or outside of the right of way and within an ABC barrier. So compared to those other sites, this is to us more accessible, safer from a liquor perspective. You know, we are doing our best to comply with all of these different regulations and it's like hitting a moving target, you know?
Okay, back to my question.
Sure.
This, the city's right of way ends at five feet from the curb face.
That's correct.
Caltrans wants an extra foot. You're saying the city wants another foot and a half and keep any, any private endeavor off of another foot and a half of private property. Is that?
I'm, I'm, well, no, 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 that's not necessarily what I was saying. What I, what I was saying is that Jersey Mike's had seven feet, seven inches.
Okay.
And that's, that's what they had initially.
Right.
So we were looking at that impact being reduced to a level of four, five feet, four inches at pinch points. Well, at one pinch point specifically.
Okay, as I look, as I look at page two of the site plan, I see space. I, I guess from west to east, there are five pillars across the end of the building, okay? Only three of them are shown on the screen here. But it seems to me you have space between the fourth and fifth pillar to the east end for all of the tables that are portrayed here between the second and third pillar.
There's a utility meter in that area. That can't be moved. Between the fourth and fifth pillars.
I saw, I saw what looked like a, a mailbox over there.
Well, there's a mailbox, but there's also a utility meter against the side of the building there, so we can't. Is all accessible from that area.
Okay, okay. Let's, let's address, first of all, then, the westernmost table that you have there next to the new door. Is there a reason not to put that next to the easterly door?
It wouldn't fit in its existing dimensions because the pillar.
You couldn't get the five foot bench in there, I would agree.
No, no, we couldn't even get the, the 28 inch table because that door, one, one, that door would like open into the table, which would create another ADA issue because you need to have 48 inches between the doorway and another structure. So we couldn't have that there to begin with. But also, there's not room between the pillar, the fourth pillar that's not portrayed and the existing, the, the door on the eastern side. There's, there's not space to put it there.
Okay. As we look at this, this triangle, which is wider at the east end than at the west end, if, if the barrier were placed at seven feet, seven inches from the curb face, which is not something I'm willing to agree to yet, is there space to put another table closer to the barrier farther from the building?
Sorry, on the eastern end?
On the eastern end.
Closer to the.
If, if, if you restricted yourselves to what the city is saying right now, which is taking an extra foot and a half out of your private property, is there space to put a table over there?
No, we couldn't.
Not next to the building, but away from the building.
No, there isn't because we wouldn't be able to have this ABC barrier.
Wouldn't be able to have the.
And there's also, and there's also, in, in the, in the existing conditional use permit from Jersey Mike's, they also had zoning on the front side of this building for outdoor dining facing the parking lot. And that distance is significantly less than seven foot seven. It's, it's not, it's not on this drawing because we're getting, we're actually reducing the outdoor seating that was on the western facing side of the building. That's allowed in the existing conditional use permit and we're slimming down to this consolidated area on the northern facing side of the building.
There was, there was outdoor seating without alcohol sales on the parking lot side of the building.
Yes, and it was well within the five foot city right of way. I guess it's not to the curb, it's to a private parking lot.
That's all private property at that point.
Yeah. But. Yeah, and that's, so that's why, that's why we identified kind of this area as the most suitable. I don't, I mean, we could, we, you know, also like, we can take another stab at this. Like we're, we, we're, we want to. we want to continue to work and edit this. Like, when we got this memo a week ago saying that this wasn't the city's recommendation, after going back and forth so many times, we were like, okay, well, what can we try, can we try something else, you know? But it seems like every time we propose a new item, then it gets continually pushed and pushed and pushed. And those are sales that we're, you know, losing.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm still struggling with the question of if, if there were an ABC barrier erected six feet from the curb face all along that north side of the building and potentially along the east edge as well, is that illegal? Or is it just that Jersey Mike's didn't ask for that much space so these people can't have that much space?
There, it's not a case-by-case scenario. What we're looking for here is a width that still allows for the pedestrian who's traveling along the sidewalk to feel safe in both directions. And seven feet, seven inches was certainly something that, that those pedestrians felt safe. Reducing it to five feet, four inches, however, I think, I think-
I'm not understanding where the five feet, four inches came from, I'm sorry. I understand five feet from the curb face. I understand six feet from the curb face. The five feet, four inches is from some other place than the curb face, right?
It's from the tree well.
It's the tree well at the east side to the, to the barrier.
Correct.
If there was no tree well, there wouldn't be even a discussion. It's just that one tree well that creates that pinch point of five-four.
Yeah, let me, let me just ask a clarifying question because I was under the impression, so from here, there-
That red line is the five-foot line?
Yeah, is this, this is five feet, four inches, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
But I was led to believe this area here from the edge of, edge of this area down to the face of curb was five foot, feet, five feet, four inches.
So, you can see how the, the tree well, the tree well travels farther south than the curb face.
Okay, so, so the, when the plans are reduced and submitted at eleven, eleven by seventeen, they are not to scale at one, and this isn't a criticism, but to one inch equals a foot. And so, what I did was I took a measurement of the five foot, four inches, but it wasn't exactly five foot, four inches. It was just a specific distance on a, on a straight edge, and then moved it to the other side, and it was identical. So I called the pinch point on the east side being the rail to the curb at five foot, four inches, because on the plan, it matched the other side. So, that distance on the east, or I'm sorry, west.
The west, the, the right end of this drawing?
Yes, so where it says five feet, four inches from ABC barrier to face of curb on the west end, it's, it's possible that that is not five feet, four inches.
So then I'd ask the applicant, what is that distance?
Yeah, it's, it's one oh two, I believe, from the edge of that fence to the curb. We're happy to take the measurement again. I know that in our conversation, when we were there together in person, we took that measurement. And I believe you told me that that was not of significance. It was that tree well pinch point. So, if it is now more significant, I'm happy to go back and retake that measurement and include it in our plan.
So that-
And I- We were told, literally, we were told that measurement wasn't as much of a inhibition, that it didn't bear the import of putting it on the plan. So, now if that's a concern from staff, we're happy to address it and get you that measurement. But I can say confidently that it is at least beyond five-four, and I would say approaching or exceeding six feet.
The inches that you mentioned, I divide by twelve, it's eight feet, five inches, if, if that was accurate. I think you said one oh two?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's a wide spot.
Now, I don't know-
Vice Chair Nolan has a question.
Kind of squares with, with my taping of the, of the property this afternoon. The, the pinch point that I saw was from the face of the westernmost pillar. But there's not going to be anybody sitting there by the face of the westernmost pillar.
No, that's, that's excluded from this new dining.
Everything is to east, to the east of that, and the space gets larger and larger as you go farther east. And I'm still having trouble with the seven foot, seven inches, I'm sorry.
Chair Colisi?
Because there doesn't seem to be any, any legal basis for it other than that's what Jersey Mike's asked for.
And the idea of a safe pedestrian, a pedestrian's feeling safe in that zone, is that based on public comment? Like, we, we've, we've solicited public comment twice now. One for the director's exemption, once for the alcohol, and we have yet to receive public comment that says anything about the right-of-way. I, I, the two public comments were new to me today about the wood fire, and I'm happy to address those too. But no, no one from the public has told us that there's a feeling of discomfort from the right-of-way.
Chair Colisi?
I'm, I'm trying to understand how a restaurant could operate and say, you can have beer and wine in this part of the restaurant, but not in that part of the restaurant. And that's the situation
Yeah.
that, that we're being led to here, which, which doesn't make sense to me. And so I'm trying to figure out-
And it's unsafe.
Is there any way to get that same number of tables in, even if it means we adjust the seven foot, seven inches, which has, has no city boundary basis, has no Caltrans boundary basis, only has an old request from a previous occupant of the building.
Well, it'll be the judgment of the commission as to whether this is an impacted intersection and whether, what's suitable. That's up to the commission right now, and we need facts, we need a detailed plan. And we're not, I, I need to have clarity on this before we, before I'm willing to move ahead.
Chair Colisi, that, that was my comment. Rather than us going round and round and round and guessing on these dimensions, in my opinion, or my recommendation would be that the applicant, and I'm not opposed to the project, but we all, all of us, all the commissioners, we need to have the exact same information in front of us to make, you know, our decision.
Yeah, I would agree.
Our recommendation. So, I would, my proposal is that the applicant come back and have a drawing to scale that's clearly labeled, and you need to show, label, you know, all the benches, all the furniture. You can label the door widths, just like you would on an architectural plan. The same thing for the tree well, so, so everybody has a good perspective about what's going on. Clearly delineate the public right-of-way, the Caltrans right-of-way or delineation of six feet. And if I didn't say it, even, I know you had mentioned about the utilities, which I remember seeing out there, that should be on there, because typically, when we get a drawing, we're supposed to get a, a, or close to it, a survey drawing that shows all of the elements. And then we all pretty much know what's going on. And like I said, I'm not opposed to your project. We just need to make sure that it works. And if we do, if there are some suggestions-
Let's keep in mind here, we're still in the phase of this public hearing where we're asking questions of the applicant. I'd rather not get into deliberations yet. And we can have a motion, if a motion to continue for two weeks is, is appropriate, that would be appropriate at a different time.
Uh, Chair Colisi, I, I was just going to make that point, that discussion at this point, if there are any further questions, the applicant, I would do it now, but then we also have to do the-
And we still have the public comment.
Okay.
I, I have a quick question for the applicant, and maybe this is something-
Do we have any more questions for, for Mr. Allen?
Yeah, I do.
Um, I, and I, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding the drawing. So, the, the drawing that's up there on the screen right now is very clear to me. And that is, there's a curb, there's five feet away, there's a red line, six feet away, there's a green line. Well, there may or may not be, it may, it may not be appropriate. But let's presume for a second that, 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 that's the way, that's the way it is. What you're saying is that, in fact, the green line is in the wrong place, and that you could, you could, um, this is a question, not a statement. Well, it's a, it's a statement that you can-
Sure, I understand where you're going.
Agree or disagree with. You're saying that the, that the ABC fence in reality would fit all within the project side of the green line?
Yes.
So, immediately, as we're looking at this, you know, we look at it and say, well, they can't get, they're not going to be able to get the ABC, or maybe they can get the ABC to agree to having their fence, well, ABC's going to want the fence, but the question is, are we going to want it? Or, I'm sorry, Caltrans, it's Caltrans, it's not ABC. So will Caltrans allow your fence to go into, into that space?
Across the green line.
Across the green line. But you're saying that isn't even needed because we're, the measurements are wrong, and what we're looking at is, is incorrect. And what your, your fence, as you're designing it, is within the green line.
That's correct.
And, and if that's the case, it seems to me, and what, what I think we were moving towards was, I thought, upon just reading the docket, but not, not examining or hearing anything, was moving towards saying possibly that you, if you can, if you can get Caltrans to waive the problem, and the ABC to, and you're, and the ABC agrees with your, with, with your positions there, that if, then what we could be is in a position to say, yes, but we're not opining on the question of alcohol or on the question of the, of the street. Is that, is that your position?
That's, that's correct to my understanding. In our understanding, the project side is within this green Caltrans six-foot right-of-way. The ABC has given us their approval that this has the required ADA accessibility, it has the required, you know, barriers, and the required four-foot exit for egress on the other side. So, this is truly, I mean, if it's, it's dependent on city approval. If the city approves this plan, then the ABC will approve this plan. And we, I, I can say with confidence that we won't need a Caltrans encroachment permit because the project side is not within six feet of the curb.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the end of that.
I, I can say with confidence that the project was, is within six feet of the curb. So I don't believe a Caltrans permit is appropriate. But if it is, we're happy to apply and, you know, get their approval as well.
If they're more than six feet from the curb, it sounds like no Caltrans encroachment permit is required.
Maybe this is a point of clarification that I can get from Lucas, is that, does Caltrans care about the tree well? Or are they just concerned with the curb?
So any work that's being done within their right-of-way or within the access way would need an encroachment permit, so yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask one last question?
Can I ask you a question? I have a question. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Uh, quick question for the applicant.
Wait, wait, we got, we got multiple people talking here. Mr. Bennett has the floor.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm asking a question. Has there been a discussion about, that you've been involved in about putting a grate on that tree well?
I haven't been involved in a discussion about that, but if that's a solution that the city is happy with, it's more than acceptable to us.
Okay.
Whether or not it's permitted, it seems to me, there, there are pedestrian issues.
There are grates around a lot of trees in town, along Signal Street, for example.
Thank you, that's all.
Before you leave, Mr. Allen, I, I know that one of the emails that came in questioned your use of a wood-fired oven.
Yeah.
And, and a potential problem, maybe you've already solved it, with, with microparticles, embers, gas, gases, that sort of thing.
Yeah, I can speak to that.
So that you don't have to come back again
Sure.
to respond to someone from the public asking that question. Could you address it now?
Yeah, so one thing that was said, I think by Lucas about wood-burning ovens, is that, actually, there are wood-burning ovens allowed in Los Angeles County. I've worked on several of them there. Occasionally, Los Angeles County has an additional environmental screening board that you require approval from. That doesn't exist in Ventura. So Ventura County does usually go from the manufacturer recommendation. Our oven includes a spark arrestor within the channel of the chimney column, so there's no particulate matter. And- Yeah, it requires, we have a letter of no interest from the fire department, which we already have sent the city. And the APCD, the Air Pollution Control Directory Board?
District.
District. They work with Ventura Plan Check through the Environmental Health Department, and they've already approved the plan as well.
Okay, so you've jumped the hoops as far as the wood-fired oven.
Well, we had-
As far as you know that there are hoops.
Yeah, yes, and we had to do that before we even got to the stage of the director's exemption.
Okay.
Commissioner Colisi, I believe there are further questions. I believe Commissioner Trent had a question as well.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Trent, please, go ahead.
Yeah, no, thanks, I appreciate it. This is just a clarifying question. You had mentioned that if, if this doesn't go through, then you will be prohibited from selling beer and wine. Is that for the entire business, or is that just for this section outside?
That's, that's for the outdoor section, which, I, which is, you know, that's, twenty-five percent of our seating would not have alcohol. So that number I gave you earlier of sixty-five thousand dollars of sales we're projecting in this area, we would lose out on.
Okay, so you could still sell beer and wine inside the facility?
We've already, yeah, we, our director's exemption for indoor sale was already approved by the city.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions, commissioners? We got really tiny pictures on the wall right now of you in order to accommodate the drawing, which I appreciate. Thank you. Commissioner Lottis or Commissioner Nolan, any other questions for the applicant?
No, I'm, I'm good. Ready to move on to public comment.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time, sir.
I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Uh, we'll open the public hearing now. And Sheri, I know we have one speaker from the public who wishes to speak on item four. Nope. Please come forward, sir.
I was not called. Okay, maybe I'm not hearing you. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. I've lived here for fifty-two years. I want to support the applicant in running a full restaurant with alcohol, beer and wine service inside and outside. As the chair said, it would be really troubling for staff to say to a customer or group of folks who want to eat there, sir, ma'am, if you like alcohol, you have to stay inside, you can't go outside. So, a couple of points. What's real, what's logical, and what's fair? So, what's done in other restaurants in town seems to me very important, and not one case versus another case. Azu being the most important. They didn't have any barriers, and apparently they sold alcohol, and they had a thriving business. If I were involved, I would like to see all the key stakeholders around a drafting table with the plan out, with tape measures, with rulers, with whatever, and work this thing out so you can get adequate space for the public, meet Caltrans, also if a barrier is necessary, and I'm wondering now because Azu didn't have that. And come to a win-win situation. In Ojai, our general plan says we want to support businesses, we want a tourist town, we want a resident town, and we support, the Chamber of Commerce has a hundred thousand dollars from the city to support new businesses. So, this is a handicap here. This is a boulder, this is an obstacle. I think we can work around it, we can get rid of it. We want, and they want, I'm assuming we want, a gourmet restaurant, a gourmet environment for this restaurant, so people can enjoy their piece of foods in and outside with a beverage choice that includes wine and beer, and so that they can do it outside and inside. Commissioner Lottis answered the question about wood-fired ovens by saying the Air Pollution Control Department has responsibility here. And I just heard that they've approved it, so I have no problem with that. Let's be fair here. And let's all get together and make this work, because I'd like to see this business thrive. We've got young people who are wanting to start something in Ojai, and we should support it. Just remember, we gave the Chamber of Commerce a hundred thousand dollars to make this happen. support it. Just remember, we gave the Chamber of Commerce $100,000 to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sherri, do we have any other persons who wish to speak on Agenda Item Four? All right. Then we're going to close the public hearing and bring this discussion back to just the Planning Commission for deliberation and ideas about where to go next. Vice Chair Nolan, would you like to start?
Sure. I'm actually in favor of the project. I think, but my only, you know, drawback at the moment is, you know, I've made notes on my plan. It's unfortunate that we didn't have a clearly dimensioned and labeled plan. That's my only drawback is, in a couple places, I'm just, you know, I just want to make sure, yeah, it works. But I, I see no problem with it. And I, I feel like, you know, having measured other sites downtown in the walkable downtown area, I, I do know that our sidewalks fluctuate, but on average, a lot of them are about in the five-foot, maybe five-foot-plus range. I know it varies. So I feel, you know, five feet is a good two abreast width for a sidewalk. It's probably the minimum for a public sidewalk in a downtown area, if you want a nice walkable downtown. But it does, but it works. And I, I do, I want to see a thriving business also. And if they can serve the alcohol inside, I, I don't see why they can't serve it outside. I do appreciate that they've made that three-foot barrier between, between the tables and the, the proposed barrier, and that would allow for ADA access within that dining area. So, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Lottis?
Well, you know, I guess, I guess I, I'm not real happy about having the alcohol served outside, but it's, if you're serving, you know, well, we've got Ojai Pizza, and they serve alcohol inside, and that's all there is. And it works fine. And I, I'm very concerned about the public access, you know, with the crosswalk coming in there, the tree well. And I, and then given this lack of clarity on measurement, I, it's like, you know, looking into a black hole somehow and trying to figure out what's what. So I, I'm having a lot of trouble with the serving of alcohol outside because I don't, I don't, I'm not sure that there's a way to do this unless they really reduce the number of tables to really allow room for pedestrians to move. I support the staff position in terms of really, you know, they're, they're moving their business outside. They're, they're trying to, they're, they want to have more square footage than they started with. And we have people, the public moves through the sidewalk there, and they always have. And, you know, I'm, I'm leaning toward promoting the safe passage of pedestrians, I guess, and maintaining that and protecting it. And that we really need to be careful and thoughtful about these kinds of additional, additional adding of square footage to existing businesses because our downtown is pretty, pretty constrained in many ways and, and in many locations. And I, I think part of the problem here is that we split the director exemption process. It, it is a bad idea. I don't, I think that we want to talk about this more because it's, it's like piecemealing a project, which by the way is illegal under CEQA. But it, it kind of leaves the applicant down one path, thinking everything's all lined up, and then, oh, whoops, now he's got to do another level of process through the commission for his one project. And I think that, anyway, that, that needs further discussion. It's a separate topic, and well, I'll let that just finish that thought there. So, I don't know. I guess I'm concerned about moving ahead without further clarity on the measurements, and I am concerned about serving of beer and wine outside. It's, you know, we've talked about this before. Ojai has far more alcohol and beverage outlets than per capita than anything else around. I mean, like, it's something like instead of the, the normal eight, eight outlets, I think, for our size of population, we've got like 50. I mean, we're not talking a little bit. We're talking a huge amount. And I, I don't have a problem with them serving beer and wine inside or selling it inside, but adding, allowing them additional square footage that they didn't start out with, I have a problem with that. So that's, I guess that's where I stand.
Okay. Commissioner Trent?
Yeah, I, I would like to see better, yeah, better drawing, particularly on the western side with the tree well that's there. I just feel like being down that, that area, you know, like, I go down there probably every day, and it's very narrow as it is, making it where someone will run right into that, that fence, you know, it's like a direct line of sight. So I'm just, just curious if it, you know, we can look at the dimensions a little bit better, a little clearer, have a really, you know, clear understanding of what the space is between that barrier wall and the sidewalk, and then also on the western side, the space between an open door and that tree well, to see if we've got a, you know, a safe passage of at least two people in that area. I'm not opposed to the, the beer and wine sale. I mean, I think that's fine. I just, you know, just want to make sure that we're keeping in mind the, the people that are on the sidewalk, because it is a busy sidewalk, particularly with that crosswalk there.
Okay. Mr. Bennett?
I'm not concerned about the alcohol issue. The restaurant immediately north of it.
There's no mic. I don't think.
Turn your mic on.
I'm not, I'm not concerned about the alcohol issue. The restaurant immediately to the east of it has tables outside and serves alcohol. I don't see that as being problematic. I, I think as long as the end of that fence is within the five-foot-plus-one-foot Caltrans area, if it, if it does measure out there, I don't have a problem with that either. I don't, I think that, I know the city and the planist of the city want to get as much real estate back for the, for the common good as possible, but I'm also very empathetic with these guys who are trying to start a restaurant. And I think stretching them out for another two weeks, it may be nothing to me, but if you're trying to start a business and it's, it's been delayed for a number of reasons, I, I think we should, well, I, I'm, I'm in favor of supporting them.
I believe they can operate, I mean, I don't think Steph could respond to this, but I think they could operate selling the pizza, selling beer and wine right now. Once they have the inside ready, they can do it. They could add the, they can continue the process with the outdoor patio and, and initiate the business inside and sell beer and wine with the pizza. That's all.
Is that, is that correct, Lucas?
All permitted.
They could, they, they have permission from the city at this point to operate and sell alcohol inside?
Yes, they received a director's exemption.
Okay.
For that, for that use.
Okay. That's, that's what I thought. I'm sorry, Mr. Bennett, are you through?
No, I just wanted, and since, since that, that point has been added, I think that, that the additional information we will get by delaying for two weeks is not worth the delay. And I think we need to be seen as a city that welcomes projects like this. And the more we send people back, you know, for a six-inch measurement, the more people are going to say, eh, you know, it's really tough doing business here. And when we want to attract business, it's, that's not a good reputation to get. So I'm done.
Okay. My feelings, part of which I've expressed already, unfortunately, because we weren't in deliberation yet. I, I have been out there and I have applied a tape measure from the building to the curb face at several different points. And I can't square what I saw with what I have seen in this drawing package. So I'm not really sure where the limits are of, let's just take an example. What are the limits where an ADA, I'm sorry, ADA, an ABC fence could be placed to allow outdoor restaurant seating with alcoholic sales? It is not yet clear in my mind from the drawing that we had on the screen or from anything in the drawing package. As, as staff knows, I, I push to make sure, at least try to push to make sure that any applicant is following the rules here, and I expect the same of the city. I continue to have a problem with pushing anything that, that a private parcel owner can do farther and farther into that private parcel owner's property to allow whatever it is, passage of pedestrians, prohibition of using that space for a commercial purpose, which this would be. And I would, I would personally like to see, and if anyone wants to make a motion to this effect, fine. If not, I'll make the motion and see if I can get a second. I would like to see two weeks from now, a full scaled drawing that encompasses both the east and west ends of the building and the street. And see on that where the five-foot from the curb face line is, where the six-foot from the curb face line is, and what space is left over. I think that it ought to be acceptable for this business owner to put an ABC barrier six feet from the curb face because I don't see any legal reason that they couldn't, other than preference of the city that there be more space for pedestrians. But without knowing exactly where all these things are, I don't quite know what to do. I don't want to restrict this business owner from selling alcohol at outdoor restaurant seating when it's legal inside. I don't think that makes sense. I, I would like to see that scaled drawing. I would like to know, and this is just a suggestion to the applicants, you're willing to make some changes to the outdoor seating. I don't want to call it outdoor dining because that's a special phrase in the code. But the outdoor seating, if the easternmost square dining table were moved to some other location, where might that be depending on where the ABC barrier must be placed? I think that these people could go on with their plans for the inside of the restaurant over the next two weeks, and we could reconsider the question of outdoor restaurant seating with alcohol sales if we had a good drawing that portrayed the entire end of the building and the street. And, and I would, if no one else wants to, I would make a motion that we continue this item to October 20th and request that the applicant and the city staff come back with a complete scaled drawing showing the curb face, the end of the public right-of-way, the end of what the additional foot that Caltrans claims for itself for reasons I don't yet understand and don't need to right now, and the additional foot and seven inches inside that, that the city claims to want to keep this private parcel owner from using. And then let's see where those tables can be placed and where a barrier could be placed to allow these people to have outdoor seating with alcohol sales. I, it is my personal feeling that that should be the goal here. If we're going to allow it indoors, we should allow it outdoors. And I'd like to see if it is possible to create a plan that accomplishes that. So that's my motion, long-winded as it was, and I apologize.
Steve, I could second that.
Okay. Vice Chair Nolan, thank you.
I just wanted to add, and it's, and it's basically what you said, but it just needs to be fully labeled and fully dimensioned and to scale.
Yes. And I want to, and I want to see that, that tree well on that scaled drawing as well.
But in two weeks, that's October 20th, and I will second the motion.
Okay.
There's a second, so.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion, commissioners?
Just, I'll just take one point.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
That's okay. I was just going to say one quick add. If we could include in the measurements, the, the, the door that's on the west side, as, as it's opened from the very point of it to the curb, that would be a good measurement to see as well, just to understand.
That would be part of the fully dimension.
If it's fully dimensioned, we'll have that, John.
All of them, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. And Commissioner Lottis, did you have another question?
No, no more. Just a, just a point. I, I definitely appreciate getting the detailed information so that we can make a, a fully informed decision. And this, you know, despite I've expressed my inclination, but I'm still willing to consider the, the project as a, you know, with, with more information. And I might add, however, the public right-of-way, I, I dare say that the city had put in that sidewalk. I, I suspect that that was a public works project in expense, and that's part of the reason, reason why the entire public sidewalk is considered public. It's, you know, it's a public resource, and I think that it should be considered as that. And, you know.
Okay.
When a private enterprise wants to use that, we just, it's not that it's, it's not that it should never be, but it, it just needs to be the public, it's a public resource. Let's look, let's incorporate that.
Well, if, if the city has paved over part of the private property, then that's a different problem.
Well, again, I don't know who put the sidewalk in, but I dare say that was a public works project.
Yeah, could be. Could very well be. Okay. Any more discussion of the motion? Then Sherri, would you call the role, please?
Quilci?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Very good. Hope to see you back in two weeks, folks.
There is one more problem with this. This was covering the approval of the ABC barrier and alcohol, but this was also a designer review permit for the seating in general. And the recommendations, if, if we could open with just the seating, no barrier, no sale of alcohol.
Just dining outside.
Just dining outside.
As it is.
No fence barrier, no encroachment.
And then in two weeks when we come back.
We'll talk about the.
We can talk about adding the ABC barrier.
Yeah, that's what it said. That was, that was the purpose of the history report. It's two states. It's one seating and designer review for that, and then it's additionally barrier and sale of alcohol.
Okay. Let me ask staff then. If we, if we have a subsequent motion that changes the effect of the motion that was just passed to say, approve this DE and this DRP, but call for additional information to decide whether or not the commission will subsequently approve of alcohol sales with an ABC barrier in that area. Is that, is that a legal subsequent motion, Mr. Attorney?
So you can, in a subsequent motion, you can choose to amend the, the motion that was just passed and with the modification that what's being continued is not the, the design, the design permit, but the.
And not the DE?
Not the DE, but the modification of the minor conditional use permit, which is the one being.
That is the only thing that is a barrier to the alcohol sales at this point?
Correct. Correct. So the resolution actually specifically identifies, that was before the commission, specifically identifies the, the seating being completely removed as well as the alcohol aspect. Now. Now, the commission didn't.
Being removed, or just the barrier being removed? And the alcohol sales.
Seating remained, correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, at this point, you can, an appropriate motion, I think, would be to motion that, to propose a motion that the director's exemption be approved.
And the design review being approved? But the modification to the MCUP be held in abeyance for two weeks?
Well, here's the challenge with what we're looking at here, we're looking at design, we're looking at intensification of potential parking through the DE.
There's more seating outside?
No, alcohol is potential intensification, which requires us to look at parking as it relates to the use. Hold on. The CUP, the minor CUP, is actually for the outdoor dining facility. So if we were to move forward as they had requested, and it's really up to the commission, it would be for the minor conditional use permit. The alcohol aspect, it's really handled through the DE, would then be continued, which then includes that barrier aspect that we're talking about as well, if that makes sense.
Okay, and I apologize to one and all if I made that motion not accomplishing what I wished to accomplish. What I would like to see is that the commission approve all aspects of this with the exception of the alcohol sales outside, and that at a subsequent meeting, presumably two weeks from now, with a scaled drawing, that we revisit the question of alcohol sales at the outside seating.
So that would, the correct motion then would be, your motion would be to amend the previously passed motion to approve the minor conditional use permit, and ask that the design review, the director's exemption, approval of director's exemption be continued for two weeks, in order to allow the applicant to provide the information that you've, and staff to work on the information provided.
Okay, the director's exemption only had to do with alcohol sales outdoors?
Correct, which then.
Okay, okay, good.
Triggers the barrier, correct.
All right, all right.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, so, I actually did not think of this prior, but why are we not putting this into the bin of formula business that needs a new approval? It's totally different from Jersey Mike's. But it is a chain type of business. The wood-fired pizzas are everywhere.
And we're not a chain type of, this is independent business, we have no other operating capacity.
Are there?
Yeah.
Yeah, please, please come back up, are there any other?
Staff respond?
Are there any other pizza restaurants with the name Pinion?
There are no restaurants, pizza restaurants or restaurants otherwise with the name Pinion. We are only sole members of this LLC partnership. There's no other restaurant that we are involved in, this model is not buying, you know, to get really into it, we're buying local produce, we're not pitching in trucks, we're not expanding. This is one and only, this is just us.
This is the only Pinion in the world.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Chair Quillsey, on respect to the formula business, the formula business ordinance specifically addresses businesses that share, there's five factors, and sharing two factors is the ordinance, the moratorium is one factor.
Correct.
And I guess the analogous would be, an Italian restaurant that serves Italian food is not necessarily a formula business, because there's another restaurant, there are other restaurants that also serve Italian food. The Jersey Mike's is an example of a formula business, that would be prohibited, that would be prohibited in the city. However, here, from, I believe looking at the information the applicant has presented, this does not, this is not a formula business.
And in addition to that, I'd just like to add that.
The staff has looked into that.
Right, and so I'm, that's correct, so CDD, Community Development Department, myself included, will be reviewing that as a part of their business license and zone clearance. That's the process that we have for formula businesses, so they're aware of that, we've either spoken to them about it, or they've spoken with someone in finance in regards to that process, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks for clearing that up.
So then, oh, Vice Chair Nolan, please.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I completely understand the amended motion that you just brought up. And I believe you said, okay, we would, was it to approve the DE, the director's exemption, and then to continue?
No.
Oh, I have it backwards?
The amended motion would be to approve the DRP, which includes the outdoor seating?
It'd be the minor.
Includes the outdoor seating, but not the alcohol sales.
Right, the minor conditional, the minor conditional use permit includes outdoor dining facilities.
Okay, so we would be approving the DRP and the MCUP, but not the DE that would allow the alcohol sales at the outdoor seating?
There is no DRP, it is a DE or MCUP. So the DE, which would regulate the alcohol, which then regulates the barrier, is handled separately than the minor conditional use permit, which handles the seating aspect. So the seating aspect is really what they're looking to for approval, so they continue moving forward, bringing back the DE that then addresses the alcohol and the barrier that follows that.
So DE 21-012 is for what?
The alcohol.
The alcohol.
Just the alcohol sales?
And the barrier. And the barrier.
And the barrier, okay.
They're hand in hand.
Modification to the MCUP.
It's for the seating.
Dining facilities.
Which is the tables and chairs.
So if we approve the modification to the MCUP and continue the director's exemption, then the applicant would be able to continue with all the seating that they have, continue with plans for alcohol sales inside the building, and the only thing left to decide is alcohol sales at external seating?
And I'd like to ask the attorney, if I could, to make this a clean process, does it make, would it make sense to bring back a resolution that addresses this first aspect, or do we, would it make more sense as a minute action here to approve that piece, the outdoor dining, and then bring back a resolution that addresses both? That's the question I have from a clean.
Right, because the current resolution that the staff has prepared addresses both, and so what the commission wants to do here, from what I understand from your motion, is we're basically splitting this resolution. And to do this as a minute action would require amending this resolution and striking out pretty much everything to do with the director's exemption.
I don't know how we can approve seating. We cannot approve seating without the detailed plans, I mean, we're gonna let them do something, and then they're gonna come back and go, oh, well, that doesn't work very well, because now we have the dimensions. We need to look at the whole thing, we need to have a complete resolution, we need to make good decision-making, this commission, we can't, we don't, this is a really significant corner, we cannot afford to make a bad mistake, we really need the whole package, two weeks, approve it, the guy can do his pizza inside, he can have beer and wine sales inside, nothing outside. I just, there's nothing that's, anything else is irrational, it is not based on fact, and we really should not be doing that. And two weeks is not a long time.
Yeah, I agree, and that's what I was gonna say, because we could go ahead and say, oh, we approved the seating as you showed tonight, but when we kept the plan back in two weeks to look at the alcohol use and the barrier and the dimensions, then we go, hey, that doesn't work. And then you have to like start all over again, it doesn't make sense, because, to a degree, because of site limitations, they need to go hand in hand, in my opinion. So which would go back to the original proposal, Steve, not an amended proposal?
Well, okay, let's.
Chair Quillsey?
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, I think all the issues, I, having reviewed this, and having reviewed this and.
Resolution.
The resolution, and I would caution against doing this as a minute action and splitting this, because the separate findings haven't been made, and so you can always come back with a resolution at the next meeting addressing both of these issues, but approving this use without the necessary findings in a standalone resolution, I would recommend against.
Which use do you speak of now?
Approving the modification to a minor conditional use permit at this point.
And what would that modification accomplish?
So that modification is the exterior dining facilities, approving that separate from.
It's the exterior seating without the alcohol sales.
Correct, approving that separate from, approving that separate from the director's exemption is something you could do, however, again, I think there's a concern that those, that the two are both linked, because the plans relate to, will show both. And then the second thing is that we haven't necessarily, staff hasn't made the necessary findings on this independent, this independent permit. And I would recommend doing, taking apart this resolution by minute action and doing it that way. I, my recommendation would be to continue the entire thing, and then either asking staff to have two resolutions, one approving the minor conditional use, the modification to a minor conditional use permit, and one approving the director's exemption, or coming back with the same resolution, including additional findings based on the information that's gonna be presented at the next meeting. However, doing this in a piecemeal process, I would recommend, it's possible and you could do it, but I would recommend against it, because staff hasn't made the necessary findings, and it could.
And we don't have a clean copy of anything that the public could see?
Correct.
I would agree with that. Let me see if I understand then, we are only talking tonight about two things, a director's exemption, which deals strictly with alcohol sales.
And the barrier.
And the barrier for the outdoor seating.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
So indoor seating, indoor alcohol sales are already approved by the city, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so what we have left is outdoor seating, which is covered by the modification to the MCUP, and outdoor alcohol sales, which is covered by the director's exemption.
And the construction of the barrier, and the placing of the barrier, which is also part of the director's exemption.
That's part of the alcohol sales, would be having the barrier.
Yes, you can't have the alcohol sales without the barrier.
The interior portion of the business is already approved, plans can go ahead over the next two weeks to do whatever you want there, whatever, you know, pencils out is the right way for you to go.
So the state of play really for the commission then is, you've passed a.
So we don't have to pass anything tonight for the applicant to continue work on the interior portion of this business?
Correct, and you don't have to pass, since you've already approved the motion, continuing the matter two weeks, you don't have to do any further action unless someone wants to bring a motion to split and approve by minute action, which I strongly advise against, because staff hasn't made the necessary findings, and there's no.
If we split it over the next two weeks, is that a bigger problem than minute action tonight? Or is that a smaller problem?
When you say split it over two weeks?
Split it and come back two weeks and look at two resolutions.
That's something staff could do.
That is correct, we could, you could make it by a motion, asking for a resolution to come back in two weeks that addresses the outdoor dining aspect, outdoor dining facilities, correct?
That addresses the director's exemption in one resolution and the modification to the MCUP in a separate resolution?
Correct.
Yeah, so you could direct staff to do that as a commission, you could do it by motion, you could do it by minute action, you could do it by consensus, but you could ask staff to do that as well.
Okay. But the modification of the minor CUP is what allows outdoor seating?
Yes.
Correct.
You already have outdoor seating, yeah, there's already outdoor seating approved, that the MCUP we're talking about is for a new configuration of existing outdoor seating.
Thus the reason for the amendment.
Yes.
So that's why it's a modification, so.
Okay, so outdoor seating is even allowed already, we're doing a modification to change the configuration?
Correct.
And possibly the count of outdoor seating?
The count's the same.
Counts the same?
Yeah.
But maybe the count won't fit when there's dimensions.
So to review then, we're asking, with the previously passed motion, we are asking the applicants to come back with a fully scaled drawing, so that we can decide how we want to address the placement of outdoor seating and the possible placement of an ABC barrier and to allow sales of alcohol outdoors. Is that, is that where we stand?
Yes.
Okay. And the motion that we already passed accomplishes that?
It accomplishes both of those things, because you continued the matter in its entirety. So you don't, you don't have to do anything further, unless you.
We already voted.
Yeah, any commissioner want to do something more with this right now? Hearing none? All right. I would ask the applicant, do you understand where you stand and where we stand and what we would like to see from you two weeks from now?
Nolan with staff.
Please.
We understand where we're at, and we will, I guess, provide that full-scale drawing at our own expense. We assumed that the last drawing was to scale, but it seems like in the editing process it became obfuscated, but we will provide another full-scale drawing with the callouts, including the extended western door, including the eastern tree well, and including all points along the proposed.
And the eastern edge of the building.
And the eastern edge of the building, the full property line from eastern edge to western edge.
Great, great.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, of course, thank you so much, thank you again, all of you for your time.
Looking forward to wood-fired pizza. I have to make gluten-free.
We'll think about it.
Phew, okay.
The plan is not to show the hardware. How it's attached to the ground, however, the ABC does require it to be fixed, so it can't be moved, it has to be attached to the ground.
You'd have to have little L brackets or something to hold it down to the concrete.
We need to know, we need the particulars. Gotta do it right.
I don't think that it can be slipped in and slipped out, no, it has to be fixed, it has to be, they're so heavy that you can't move it, or it has to be attached, I believe.
That's correct there.
If there are further questions, I think, if you want to reopen the issue, but we have voted to continue this.
We have voted to continue the item, we should move on.
Thank you again, everyone, thank you, everyone who couldn't be here, we really appreciate your time.
All right. Item five on the agenda, Planning Commission appointment to the Committee to Approve Public Art, Kappa. Our recently retired commissioner, Mr. Swift, was our Kappa representative, and now the city calls for.
Thought I was.
Is that Commissioner Lottis?
I thought I was.
Oh.
We have a volunteer.
I don't know, I don't know.
I can't say I remember, because it was not something I wanted to do. But the recommendation is to appoint one member of the Planning Commission to serve a two-year term on Kappa. And I think it's a five-member group, not a three-member group, as it says here, I think it's three from the Arts Commission, one from the Planning Commission, and one from, I'm not sure, from the general public, or maybe it's HP. From the general public or maybe it's H P C, I don't know.
I wasn't in the impression it was three, however, we can look into that further.
At any rate.
The reality is, is I think I just heard someone partially volunteer.
I thought I heard a volunteer who thought she'd already volunteered.
I haven't, uh, I don't think there's been any call for, um, uh, assembly of that committee.
It's an infrequent call if ever, yeah.
Yeah, it's on an adnita's basis.
Because you have to have some kind of a project
You need public art.
That you have to set aside enough money to do something
Correct.
In public art.
Correct.
Um, and if it, if it is the, the sense of the commission, that Commissioner Lottis be appointed, do we need to vote on that? Or is that a sense of the commission?
Well, we
Or would it be better to vote on it?
Well, let's first ask Commissioner Lottis if she's interested in taking on this role.
Happy to, happy to.
And if there's anybody else that's potentially interested, yes.
And that too, you ask, yeah.
She is interested. Are there any other commissioners that would like to, to take on that job? Hearing none. Uh, then I will move that we appoint Commissioner Lottis as the planning commission representative to Kappa. And I would ask for a second to that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, Sherry, let's have a roll call.
Quillissey?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Very good. Wow.
And in the, in the code it reads, um, the Kappa is a five-member, comprised of five members. Three members of the arts commission, a planning commission representative and a member of the community with art knowledge.
Okay. Well, we got ours. Um, let's move on. Item six on the agenda, priorities of the planning commission and the C D D. Um, Lucas, would you tell us about this, please?
Sure. So, um, for members of the commission that are new, Commissioner Bennett, this, this priorities of the planning commission and community development department, uh, was, has been crafted over the years, has evolved over the years. Um, items have been added to, removed from this list. Uh, this list was resurrected once again, um, with revisions, uh, post the joint meeting with city, city council, uh, a little over a month ago, if I recall correctly now.
First part of September.
Yeah. Um, so what we have here tonight are seven items, uh, as a part of this priority, uh, list. They are in numeric order, um, and I invite the, the commission to discuss these, these items. Um, if there's additional items to, to potentially consider, uh, certainly that's up for discussion tonight as well. As these are items that will be, that will be focused on over the next, um, year and coming years. Uh, and then potentially adjusted as items come forward. So with that, I opened the floor to, to discussion with the commission.
What page?
This is, uh, tab six.
Yeah, it's tab six on your.
This is a discussion item, so no vote.
Yeah, there is no vote. We're, we're simply having a discuss, well, the commission's having a discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, commissioners, um, this is beginning to look like a pretty familiar list. Are there any changes that we want to make to this? Either in adding or subtracting items or reordering the items as, as we take on more or less a self-inflicted work plan?
I would like to see the, uh, tree ordinance, water efficient landscapes moved up.
Okay.
Potentially to number four.
Where would you like to see that?
Just, I thi- I think four, I think four is good, above the Sequa guidelines.
Okay. Yeah, the Sequa guidelines are
I would too, Charlie, good call.
Okay. You want to move it ahead of formula business?
You know, yeah. I was going to say, you know, some of these items are generated from city council. And so does that mean, you know, it automatically comes onto our, um, agenda? Like the formula business ordinance, which I know because they're having a moratorium now, they want to get resolved. Um, but maybe that's something staff could answer. In other words, do the city council items, you know, take priority over what we would like to work on?
Yeah, I would say number, number one and number three certainly are city council dictated
Right.
Tasks for the planning commission.
On, on number three, the formula business, um, the moratorium, uh, is in effect till August of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. So
For a whole year.
It's not an
It's less urgent.
May not be an immediate priority, however, just note that if, if, if you want to amend the formula business ordinance or recommend amending it, it still has to go to first, uh, introduction and then second, second reading. So there's still, you, you have to think of it from the fact that if it expires in August, ca- council, commission needs one meeting and council needs two meetings to, uh, to amend it, so.
As a minimum.
As a minimum. So realistically speaking, your, your deadline to do something on formula business
Could be the first part of July.
Well.
Or the last part of June.
I'd say, I'd say even May.
I would say May at the very least. Here's, here's the reality with, from what I've seen with moratoriums, is that once it's been set and there's a year out, it's almost as if it's forgotten for the first four months and I want to make sure that that is not the case here, that we're, that we continue before. On, from, in terms of the background, staff is certainly looking into the matter and, and doing some research, due diligence, uh, looking at some other cities and then, and then bringing back that information. So it, from staff's standpoint, it hasn't been shelved by any stretch of the imagination, so.
You're, um, okay, so you can, you can come back to us with, with more information on formula business as soon as you have been able to compile it to a state
Correct. The idea is, is for it to come back, yes. Um, sooner rather than later, not necessarily as a decision, but as a discussion piece, um, to start and, and to, to work out some of the kinks, um, essentially.
General plan update is our tab seven tonight, fire suppression mitigation. I know Vice Chair Nolan and I have been talking about fire and water for more years than we'd care to think about, and I know it's a particular interest of Commissioner Trent as well. I'd like to see that stay high on the list. And I'm happy to move tree ordinance ahead of Sequa guidelines. I'm not sure what that'll do. And we'll take formula business whenever you're ready to have us take it. Would that be acceptable to the commission? We just swap four and five and move on?
Yeah, it's almost worth prioritizing, you know, if there's a time limitation. Of course, we know the general plan, you know, that affordable housing. Um, and I, we, we did get that letter today, uh, Lucas, that you sent out. Um, you know, saying that we can go back or your email indicated we could go back into the housing element because we're not going to be able to see it before it's submitted in the middle of October. And is that what you were referring to when you had the affordable housing goals and policies? This would be kind of a long-term or is there a, a date limitation on that?
Yeah, I mean, it's funny, we're actually going to be talking about the, um, a little bit of the, uh, agenda and the, the timeline for the general plan update, I think in the next item.
Right.
If I recall correctly. Uh, so yes, that's kind of what that is alluding to is kind of a, a topical look, potentially a deeper dive into some of the policies that are currently in the housing element, um, for consideration to city council, uh, on the twelfth.
Yeah.
Uh, so as a part of the general plan update, all of the elements that have been identified, the five elements that are getting, um, revised and updated, uh, the housing element is one of those elements that needs to flow with the rest of those elements. They don't act independently as a general plan. They, they act, um, in harmony. So we got to make sure that those, each of those elements and their policies, um, coincide and, and flow.
And each of the elements can be modified even after a final version has been sent forward to the state or in this case to H C D?
Absolutely.
But state law does limit how many times you can, uh, amend an element within a calendar year. Um, I believe it's three?
I want to say it's, it's definitely less than four.
Yeah, it's less than four.
It's somewhere in between two and four.
I don't think we have the stomach for multiple amendments in a given year, for sure.
But we are the, I guess, number one being, because we are in the sixth cycle and we are due to present our housing element, um,
Right.
Which
Now, now the, the, um, the cleaned up, I'll call it the cleaned up version of the housing element with responses to H C D's concerns. Is, is that now available on the city website?
Once the agenda is posted for city council, it will be available, yes.
And that'll be Friday or Monday or?
I think Friday at the latest, I think you could expect it as early as tomorrow.
So we can all see, and it, will it be a clean copy or will it be a redline copy?
Excellent question. There will be two. There will be a redline copy, uh, addressing, uh, H C D's comments and then a clean copy going into the resolution.
Okay.
For consideration for city council.
The version that, that, that responds to H C D's concerns, the red lines in that will be only those that respond to H C D. It's otherwise a clean copy that was sent forward in July?
It was, it was a clean copy that was sent forward in, in July, on July twentieth. That's correct. Uh, but that was with accepting all of the comments that had been received up to that point.
Right.
Um, and that was with, I want to say, three or maybe four, uh, planning commission meetings and discussions.
And at least one other city council meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So look for something on the city website on Friday and we'll be able to see how the housing element changed as a result of the machinations with H C D over the last two and a half months or so.
Can I ask a question on this, uh, list that we were
Sure.
This Title X update, V M U, law, law is a great for me.
Okay, okay. Well
Ah, there we go, sorry. Bring it closer, there we go. Um, the Title X update, V M U, I'm assuming is like village mixed use or something?
Yes, right.
Zoning from Com Manu, which
Commercial and manufacturing.
To special purpose district. Um, what's this about? I mean
You want the thirty seconds? There's, there's a longer discussion with that. So Title X itself, um, we've been going through an update before I started, so it's pre-two thousand nineteen. Uh, ever since I've, I've come on board here in two thousand nineteen, we've been ramping that up. Uh, we've gone through several meetings regarding Title X, uh, update. And we've been doing what I would call the errata aspect of it, which is bringing everything kind of in line, uh, consistent throughout the document. We're nearing the end of that and moving into some of the deeper dive. The V M U zoning, uh, component, which is going, which currently is under a, a commercial manufacturing heading into a special district heading is for consistency purposes as it relates to that use and its purposes, um, and what it serves overall, I think is really kind of the, the, um, the gist of that. The, the deeper dive to that is, would have to be something that's agendized. I'm only giving you kind of the twenty thousand foot level. Um, and that's only one piece to the Title X update. There's been several deeper dives that have been identified by this, by this commission. And this was also something that was, um, directed by city council, I want to say in two thousand eighteen, uh, as a part of, uh, bringing Title X, uh, kind of into a harmonious, harmonial, um, aspect versus it feeling very rigid and competitive, uh, amongst itself, so.
And internally inconsistent in places.
Correct. That's part of the errata is trying to bring that into consistency.
Um, I think that you and I spoke once, um, on the phone about the question of Bryant Circle. And I assume that it is Com Manu. I mean, it's commercial and manufacturing.
Mostly along the main routes. Manufacturing is the Bryant, that's manufacturing, plan development. Bryant Circle, Bryant Ave, Bryant Street is the manufacturing area.
Correct. The M one.
Bryant Street, okay. Well, I guess the, the issue that I'm concerned about is that I think we need to protect our manufacturing areas, interestingly enough. And although there's pressure for housing, the minute you have a human being living in a neighborhood, you have, you have a, uh, the, 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 everything changes. And I just think we have to be very careful.
Absolutely. That'll, that'll be
Is this the issue? Is that where this issue comes up?
That's part of the issue. Part of the issue is there's a group of people that are currently in what is zoned commercial that want to be V M U because there in fact are people living there.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different
Grandfathered in, in residences.
There's a lot of different pieces to that puzzle, but I think you're hitting on, on some of that as well. And we'll be diving into that, um, in the coming months. Well, but the way in which this is identified, it's identified as the least important piece of our, of our, um, priorities here currently.
Well, commissioners
I'd put Sequa guidelines as last, actually. Because we have to comply with Sequa no matter what. And, uh, you know, I mean, we can establish our own thresholds and so forth, but
I, I can't disagree with that, however, knowing that our Sequa guidelines haven't been updated since two thousand and two and Sequa actually requires us to review it every year, knowing we haven't updated it in, in nineteen years is slightly concerning, but I don't know that we're necessarily going
How big a task is that?
But there's no liability because we still have to comply with Sequa no matter what.
True. That is true. But I would say anytime a project comes in, they're relying on our guidelines and our guidelines are nineteen years old.
Ooh. So nobody looks at them, so.
Well, the first, first concrete suggestion was that we move up tree ordinance and water efficient landscape guidelines.
Yes.
And the minimum thing that we could do there is swap four and five.
Yeah.
Anyone objecting to that kind of reordering of the list?
No.
All right.
Sounds good.
As a former mayor used to say, hearing no objections, so ordered. Can we do that? This is a discussion item. Great.
Are we moving Sequa to the bottom or no?
No, we'll leave it, we'll leave it, we'll leave Sequa guideline as number five. All right. Item seven, general plan update revised schedule discussion. Sounds, sounds like the D word. Oh, I'm sorry. Before we do that, item six, we need to open public comment.
Yes, thank you.
And we do have a speaker, Mr. Miley.
Good. Good evening. Um, for the record, my name is Bill Miley. I'm speaking to the priorities issue here. I know you're going to be meeting with the city council. So I'd just like to list a few things that we've talked about, I'm sure in the past, but I'd like to emphasize right now. Where, we need to do the parking study. It's been what, nineteen ninety-two? And we keep talking about that. So that's a priority, I believe. A second priority, which I think is really important, is calming the sound environment of Ojai Avenue through the arcade between Kenyatta and Allee Shady Lane. That is a disaster in my opinion because of excessive vehicle muffler noise. And that affects the restaurants, all the stores along there. It's not really fun to sit outside and eat on Ojai Avenue with all this excessive muffler noise. Um, I'd like to see the complete street progress come up as a higher value, especially extending the trail, the Ojai Trail to Soul Park. I would like to see more E V charging stations in town, including a few for bikes. And then the last, I would like to see a priority placed on rehabbing weathering, weather rehabbing, uh, homes, houses that are owned by people with limited income who need weather, uh, insulation. And Habitat for Humanity does that. And I spoke recently to either the city, uh, somebody, to one commissioner of the city council about joining with them for the next year and doing some weather rehabbing for low-income owners. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Um, I, I would have a question for staff. Does the city have any powers with regard to automobile muffler noise?
Hmm, not that, not that I'm currently aware of.
Yeah.
But we, we might have some power on a noise level. And I, there are other communities that have, um, addressed this and we, you know, it's possible we could look at and see what they've done. I know that we're going to be
Interesting code compliance.
Well, you know, what's interesting is, yeah, the, through the environmental process, through the general plan through the general plan update, there is going to be an EIR that's going to be done and it's going to, because transportation is one that's, that's being updated, so there'll be noise readings that'll be taken along the roadways.
Ah, okay.
So I, I think that'll be an interesting piece that'll come out of that for us to take a look at.
Highly dependent on day and time.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, those, those motorcycles have illegally removed their, their mufflers. I, I, I think there might be some way to get at this. And like I said, I think other communities have, have done it where they've got, you know, like PCH running right down the middle of their commercial districts. It's kind of our situation.
Well, it's worth looking at when.
It's a shame to have all these nice new restaurants with outdoor eating and you can't hear sitting at them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. My only, my only question is whether the city has any police powers to regulate that.
It does, because if it's.
The city does have police powers to regulate if it's a, if it's a code violation. If, if the, there are cities, I think Laguna Beach is one that, where they had an issue with respect to motorcycles and I know they did a, a sound ordinance and they have, they have their own, they have, they have a sheriff's department down there, but this, it's also a code violation, so. But of course, it would take enforcement. Someone would have to go out there with a decibel meter or something like that.
They've got to have their, their.
It'd be an interesting enforcement challenge.
It would, it would be, but the city's, it's within the city's police power.
Okay, okay. Well, it may be, it may be a practical problem to regulate it, but it's not a conceptual problem and it's probably worth discussing then. All right. Let's move on to, and, and I don't know if, I don't think anybody was taking, necessarily taking notes on the other things that Mr. Miley suggested, but we can always go back over the video and capture those elements, or maybe he has them for you.
Some, some of them might.
Is there any more public comment, Sherri?
Yeah.
Okay, then we're closing public comment on item six and we'll move on to item seven, general plan update revised schedule discussion, sounds to me like delay.
I don't know that I would necessarily call it delay, but we're certainly looking at different strategies to get the community involved. There is a workshop that we're working on finalizing a deadline for that to come forward. That is, that is forthcoming and I think in the coming weeks, you'll be seeing something about that. The, the work plan itself for the general plan, we're leaning into task three of what I believe is seven, eight, seven tasks in total. Task three is actually the plan direction, which is, for all encompassing, encompassing purposes, the meat and potatoes of what we'll be doing here and how will, how this will be leading the general plan moving forward, including a workshop, information presented to this commission as well as to city council, the opportunity for joint meetings with city council and planning commission in the future. That is all being encompassed within this stage of the work plan for the general plan update. Just as a, as a reminder and just a historical aspect to this, the vision and guiding principles was recently approved by city council, which has given the guidance to the consultant in terms of how the overall frame of that general plan, taking key aspects away from that and moving that forward for Commissioner Bennett, Bennett's purpose. The vision and guiding principles itself has a, a vision statement as well as either five or six different points to, to take into consideration. You know, at, at the end of this, Commissioner Bennett, I can certainly provide you with that information as well as the rest of the commission as a reminder to what city council approved. This actually, this vision and guiding principles came before planning commission several months ago, I want to say back in May, maybe April.
We modified the draft and recommended it to the city council. Did the city council make additional changes?
They did, they did.
Okay. Yeah, it would be nice if we could all see that.
Yeah, I could, I could certainly provide that to this commission just to see what that final document ended up coming out to be, so.
When was that, when was that approved?
I want to say at the end of, end of August.
Okay.
So with, with that, the, the work plan moving forward includes the discussion and what is going to be the, kind of the, like I said, the meat and potatoes, which is the preliminary land use and transportation concepts. That's not something that is coming to the commission immediately. That's something that the consultant's going to be working on over the next, coming months. So they've already started working on that as in over the last two weeks, moving forward over the next couple of months. The, at that point, we're looking at potentially, now granted, granted, this isn't solidified, but this is where we're looking at going. And then having, once, once that information is to staff, we've had a chance to look it over, we'll have the commission take a look at it as well as city council take a look at it. Within that timeframe, there more than likely will be a workshop identifying kind of the, the key findings and, and general information to provide and get, get additional feedback before moving forward. And then there's going to be an internal, we're looking at something referred to as a team charrette with both the consultant and staff. And then the results of that team charrette will then be provided both to the commission and to city council. I think the idea here is not necessarily to have the commission or council, even the community, involved in this at the end, but throughout the stages of this process. This is really, I keep, I'm going to say this again, this is kind of the meat and potatoes of what we're looking at here. All five of those elements are being looked at in close scrutiny in terms of revisions. As this commission will remember, we've had a couple discussion items regarding land use, regarding some policies to kind of get the juices flowing and start thinking about the general plan updates, revisions, how, whether or not some of these policies are outdated, whether or not the vision for the community has shifted. This general plan hasn't been updated in, in some cases in over 30 years. So there certainly is some opportunities potentially for updates or status quo.
But there, but there, according to this list, there are five elements that explicitly need updates, one of which is the housing element, which is more or less done. But we have four others that, that need some serious work and the other elements, whichever ones they are, I don't, don't want to get into it right now.
Sure.
Is more of a, a review of state law and make minor changes.
Review of state law and consistency throughout the entire document, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Through the elements, so.
So when do you expect, and, and like you say, we've had a couple of discussions about land use, but we haven't gotten into reading the land use element and saying, are there any ideas or any words here that we think should be added, deleted, or changed?
And I, I'll repeat this, I think I said this at the last meeting, and it doesn't require a, a meeting of this caliber for, for each of the commissioners to start reviewing the, the housing element, the land use, transportation aspects, air quality. At your leisure, I encourage you to review and in the very near future, we'll be bringing forward additional aspects to, to kind of get the juices flowing as we lean into the meat and potatoes of, of this update, so.
But the end product of this exercise, as far as the planning commission is concerned, is either, it would, let's just say in general, a red line version of the land use element, a red line version of the circulation element. Maybe there's no red lines because we think it's fine, but that. And the safety element and the environmental justice element, which I'm a little puzzled still by because I don't think we have one right now, so I'm not sure what we would review.
Are you talking about the environmental justice?
Yes.
Yeah, we do not.
Environmental justice is a new state law.
It's a new requirement for a new element in the general plan.
So we'll be, staff will be.
Staff will be drafting something along with the consultant.
Yes.
And then we'll look at that just like we look at the existing, the other existing elements with or without staff and consultant comments.
Correct, and I think the, the, the key point to take away from each of these elements is, in working with the consultant, we don't want the commissioner, council, even the community to be, to be all of a sudden handed a draft housing element with all of the elements either red lined or a complete revision to all those elements. We want, we want to ease in that process, keeping this commission as well as the council apprised to, to where we're at in this process. So we don't lose sight of the end game or the end goal, which is an updated general plan. Right now, the, the schedule has pushed this out to 2023, which I think is very realistic. I will have to admit in the beginning, right before pan, right before the pandemic hit, we were talking about an aggressive timeline. That timeline, I think, after talking to the consultant, is absolutely ludicrous and we realize that this community needs time to take a look at it, look at the revisions and kind of let it sink in prior to bringing forward some of those revisions. Obviously, the community through workshops and obviously this commission and council being involved and other commissions as well, so.
Okay. Meanwhile, homework for all commissioners is to read these elements.
Yep, and that continues to be homework. I'm not saying that you need to read it page by page and obviously if you have questions about this general plan update process, I encourage you to reach out to me.
And we will have a general plan update agenda item each meeting at which time any commissioner can bring forward questions of any sort on any element.
Correct, and if there is a specific element or a specific task that you're wanting to speak about specifically, this, this is the time to do that, absolutely, because then we can start looking at how we address that.
All right. Since we're right there, do any commissioners have any questions? Ah, Commissioner Lottis.
Yeah, I, I haven't read the, you know, latest version of the housing element yet, but I did, someone did speak to me and they were quite concerned that the two-story height limit had been modified. And we'd never, at the planning commission level, that was never discussed and in fact, I didn't even really, I didn't notice any changes with any wording that was referencing a two-story height limit or a two-story envelope. Can you, what happened with that? Can you, can you give us the, the lowdown on that?
So you're talking about.
Take a shot at that?
Yeah, I mean, the two-story height limit is, aside from an existing building, I want to say off of Matelaha.
Mm-hmm, there's a three-story on Matelaha.
There's a three-story on Matelaha and Montgomery.
Yep.
And that's obviously predating potentially the general plan and even potentially zoning regulations. The, the SPL overlay as, as an example, is pretty explicit about it being two stories. If it is to go taller than that, in terms of any project that came forward, the only avenue that I would see is either one of two, either a variance or a development agreement. I mean, that, the code is pretty specific in terms of height, certainly within the C1, I want to say it's 30, 35 feet. Sorry, I don't have the code in front of me.
The code, the code is very specific about a measured height of a building, but outside of the SPL, it, it only mentions a second story in that existence or addition or modification of a second story requires planning commission review.
Yeah.
But it, it doesn't say anything else, I don't think.
I mean, if, if the discussion.
But there was no wording, that, that, there was no wording in the housing element that got changed to allow, to be more permissive in terms of building height or building envelope?
No, there's no, there's no changes in the housing element per, per an ordinance that would revise that. It is a resolution.
It wouldn't be an ordinance, it was, it would have been just in the housing element. Anything, nothing in the housing element itself.
But that, yeah, the housing element, I, I don't think I saw anything.
There was nothing in the housing element.
I didn't see anything coming through and, and I know there was a discussion at the last city council meeting as it relates to the two-story versus three-story. I think actually there is, no, there was discussion at one point of some sort of a program being, being identified for discussion, but I can tell you, through this general plan update, certainly that discussion regarding two versus three will likely come up. I know it's been a discussion in the past.
Well, yeah, I don't deny that it shouldn't be discussed. I mean, I think, I think, I just, I, we hadn't talked about any, any of the two-story height or building envelope limitations in the, in when we were looking at the housing element and I was very surprised to hear someone thought that, that there had been a change to the language, whatever language was in there.
No, not, not that I had seen, I've, I've read that, that document cover to cover several times now and nothing that I was seeing that would, that would expressly discuss in the future, three-story element. I will say this, in the, in the comments that were received from HCD, they are demanding that we do some sort of an analysis to justify that the densities within the identified SPL overlays can be met with the two-story element. So there will, there will be some sort of a analysis done in the future and it's giving us a timeframe, I want to say it's two years for us to, to take a closer look at it.
Twenty dwelling units per acre with a density bonus on top of that.
Correct, potentially. Yeah, the density bonus is, has been adjusted as well, so to be continued.
Was that adjusted to 80%?
Yes, first day long.
Thirty-six dwelling units per acre.
All that on top of the SB nine or whatever it was that now allows for, for units. That's not any family zoning property.
I don't want to get into that discussion right now, it's a deeper.
SB nine and 10 are a whole different can of worms.
We're going to be LA.
I mean, we could talk about that at a different time, it's not on the agenda tonight, but.
Gotcha.
Yeah. It's a different beast for sure. We're getting lots of calls on it.
All right. Finished with that, let's go on to item eight, director decisions. Any questions of the director on tree permits or home occupation permits? Hearing none, I would recommend we move on to item, to tab nine. And tentative agendas. We've, we've pushed Pinion to October 20th.
Yep, yeah, so that, that goes on here.
803 Country Club Drive, is that the road that is onto the Inn property or the one that skirts the Inn property?
I think it's the one that, that takes you to the, to the Inn, I believe.
Takes you to the Inn, okay.
Yeah, that's an interesting one. They're, they're looking for a lot line adjustment and a variance that goes along with that. And we're currently reviewing that and we'll be bringing that forward. The item itself is, we have all the information that we need though at this point.
It's on Country Club Drive, which is, and the road that takes you to the Inn is Road, Country Club Road.
Okay, so the, it's drive, so it's further to the east?
It is the one that skirts the Inn property.
The one that goes down the.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right, general plan update Pinion and I guess Rancho Inn, yeah, Rancho Inn and Hotel El Robar will come back whenever they can.
Yeah, they're not necessarily tabled, I mean, staff is working with them on almost a daily basis, so it's, they're, they'll, they'll be coming back sooner than later.
The city does have to comply with the permit streamlining act, so.
With the.
Which gives us.
Permit.
The Permit Streamlining Act.
So we have, what, six months?
Six months to process a permit, but the, the act, it is told for external factors, which may be a play here, but the six month is our normal clock to process all permits. Either give a, give a decision on a permit, sorry.
Yeah.
Deny or, or approve.
Yeah, provide a decision, right, okay.
That's the ceiling, I would say, and I don't anticipate that we'll be doing that for either one of these.
Oh, not, boy, that's, it's gone on a long time already. Okay, AT&amp;T Wireless Telecom, that's at the AT&amp;T Central Office at Blanch in Ojai?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I don't want to review the case right now, it's not on the agenda.
Yep.
Are there any other items that you think are going to fall into the next two meetings?
I don't think so. I think that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, you don't think that Rancho Inn or Hotel El Roblar will be coming back until November seventeenth at the earliest?
Yeah, I mean, I've got to be, I've got to be comfortable with, with what they've provided in terms of recent metals at this point and-
They can't come back to the twentieth because they need to be re-noticed.
Well, yeah, I definitely wouldn't come back for the twentieth, because both of them are being, that's true, both of them being re-noticed. Um, the third is the soonest that it, that either one of them could come back.
Well, you start talking about newspaper notice and all that, then you're backing up two weeks already, aren't you?
Correct.
Yeah.
It would have to be the day after tomorrow for the twentieth.
Yeah, and I'm, I mean, the third is-
It had to be sent by today to the paper.
Oh, today to the paper, to be in the paper Friday for two weeks from today.
Yeah, the paper gives us these specific deadlines to ensure that they can-
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, you said it would be a busy fall. I can see that coming.
Mm-hmm.
And if we start roping in pieces of the general plan as well.
Yeah, you should anticipate that as well.
We're gonna be very busy.
Busy's good.
Busy's good. I'd like to get back into more Title X update too, if we can.
Well, looking at that list, I think it's gone to the bottom of the list.
Yes.
Quite a few items. I think formula business and other items like that, I think you can expect to see as a discussion item, um, before, uh, you start seeing, uh, recommendations for ordinances.
Yeah.
Chair, on the agenda, you wanted a reminder, and we put it on the agendas A for you? On the agenda? You emailed us to ask you to remind-
I did ask you, and that's why I asked you, because I forget. Nine A, the, the Ojai Valley Municipal Advisory Council, OV MAC, meets on the third, on the evening of the third Monday of each month. Um, I am, uh, I have, I have been elected, uh, senior vice commander of the local VFW post, and that is the same evening that the VFW post meets. And so I will not be able to attend any OV MAC meetings. I have, as kind of a stopgap measure, um, sent in bullet points to, uh, what's her name, Maruha Clemzay? Some name like that, on, uh, on the supervisor's, uh, staff, um, as, as an interim report from the Ojai Planning Commission. But a report from the Ojai Planning Commission is a standing agenda item for OV MAC. And I would, I would ask that the other commissioners consider whether or not you would like to take on that task of actually either zooming or showing up in person at an OV MAC meeting to talk about what the planning commission's doing. Uh, in the absence of any such voluntary action by another commissioner, I will continue to send them bullet points, but since I'm not attending the meetings, I don't know if any of those are ever publicized either. So it's simply a matter of saying, what has the, what generally is the commission dealing with, and are there particular cases of interest that, that have come before the commission since the last OV MAC meeting? So it's the sort of thing where you think back to when the last OV MAC meeting was, sometime in, sometime in September, the twentieth, I think, maybe.
I think it was the twentieth.
And so we had a meeting after the twentieth, didn't we, that, no, their meeting was the eighteenth?
Yeah, this, this is probably it. Well, we, we used to, um, rotate it, and I thought
that was a good idea.
Yeah, I think it would be a great idea if we could get people to sign up for the rotation.
It, but it appeared in our agenda so that it was-
You just give it an alphabetical order and it just wrote-
But it had a meeting date and then a name was assigned, and it was kind of nice because then I didn't forget.
That's right, we did do that, didn't we?
We did that.
Sherry, why don't you resurrect that, but I, I would request that you take my name off the list, because I'm gonna have a conflicting meeting every month.
You do a lot of other obligations, Steve, so, yeah, I think the other three or four of us can rotate.
Four of you now, thank the Lord.
The other four.
I know. It's good to have another-
It is good.
Welcome, Jamie.
All right, um, where did we hit? Agenda item nine?
Well, before we, yeah, we're on agenda item nine and-
Nine B, discuss the holiday schedule.
Yes. So I wanted to bring this up because it, it occurred to me last year that, um, so let me just give you an example. For this year, our meetings would be on, in, for the month of December, would be on the first and the fifteenth of December. Um, while those don't seem too daunting, I then turned to 2022, and January fifth would be our next, um, regularly scheduled meeting. Um, but between that would be the hol, kind of the holiday week between, uh, Christmas and New Year's. That tends to be a, a time of the year where I am short-staffed typically. Um, and it becomes not necessarily impossible, but sometimes difficult to get these, these items out in a timely manner. But I wanted to have a discussion in, in regards to the holiday season, and I was actually looking at bringing back a schedule for the year at a subsequent meeting and kind of looking at if there's any conflicts that exist.
Ooh, outstanding, yeah.
So, um, I'm only bringing that one up just as a key example as we lean into the holiday season here.
Um, and I understand everything gets kind of crunched in between-
Yeah, and it's not to say that, that we're not gonna have staff, but it's, it becomes a bit daunting to try to get an agenda out for, like, for instance-
On New Year's Eve, New Year's Eve you'd have to drop it off at everybody's house.
I'm not saying that that's impossible, but, uh, I'm just asking for some lemming.
Maybe January fifth would be one of those times when each of us will have read or at least skimmed one of the elements of the general plan, and we could talk about that.
I mean, that's a possibility where it ends up becoming a light item.
Yeah.
Uh, agenda.
Or we could have, yeah, one or two discussion items-
Yeah, because I'm not-
Rather than public hearings.
I'm not necessarily a huge fan of, of canceling, um, items or canceling meetings, simply because, as you can see with this commission, and I know Commissioner Bennett, you'll, you'll see soon enough, I think you've seen from tonight's meeting, that there is a lot to talk about typically. Um, and we are not short from a land use standpoint and from a, a design review and community, uh, context standpoint from having those discussions, um, broad or as narrow as they may be, so.
There's plenty to do.
Yep. Um, but I'm just, I'm drawing attention to that. I, I wanted to bring the calendar forward and then maybe highlighting some, some areas that could potentially be hotspots for us to take a look at, how we can address it, um, moving forward. Not necessarily saying we're canceling meetings, because that's not what I'm, what I'm identifying here, but I'm saying, look, let's look, look at potentially on, with purpose in mind, having lighter meetings, um, with that in mind, so.
And, and let's keep general plan update and one or another of the elements as a discussion item every meeting, and we'll get through it as quickly as we can. Um, we can, I think it was 2019 or 2020, we had a couple of meetings canceled.
2020 was, I mean, we had several meetings canceled in 2020 because of the pandemic.
From my point of view, the commission got a lot of grief over that.
Sure.
So I'd rather not do that if we can avoid it.
Sure.
However, I would like to say, we don't get paid one iota, and we, we, the council takes the whole month of August off for their vacation. So, you know, if they're, I, I, in terms of the balance of work and live, play, personal and work, uh, balance and all that, um, I, I think that it would be reasonable to cancel the fifth, because otherwise, staff is working their, their, you know, working really hard, there's not enough people around those two weeks prior, and even getting out some kind of a minimal agenda is, I, I mean, it's asking a lot to never let them, I mean, this burden falls on staff also, as well as us. And, you know, so if we had a, a, I mean, this is another, uh, I, if we had a planning commission meeting, say, the, the night before a planning, uh, uh, Christmas or Thanksgiving, I would say, I think we need to cancel that. But this year, it had, you know, it just, we haven't had those kind of conflicts. And so in this case, it's, it's really thinking of staff, um, thinking of maybe alleviating a slight burden on them to not have the meeting on the fifth, and let them breathe a little bit easier during the Christmas vacation and, or the Christmas time period, the holiday time period. Um, so I, I would be fine with that. I think we work really hard. We never, we don't, we never get a break, I'm telling you. So I, I think that it's perfectly-
Another thing that might be considered, in September, we did have meetings two weeks in a row, one of them a special meeting postponed.
We had special meetings on top of regular meetings. Yes, we have, we work very hard.
And-
And that, and that burden is, is then borne by staff. I mean, we have to show up, but they do all the work essentially, so.
So if, if something light could be put together, maybe we could do the twelfth and the nineteenth in January, or just cancel the fifth outright. Um, but I think we should come back to that in a month or two and see where we are.
Yeah, because I think what, I, it's only meant to start the discussion, I'm not saying the discussion ends here. There's a reason why we're doing it early enough here, so we can bring back a calendar and kind of highlight some of those pinch points, if you will, or hotspots, if you will, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, finally, uh, commission member reports. Any, any commissioners have an item of interest? Obviously, welcome to Jamie Bennett. Um, you should all have a look at his application, I guess. That's on file on the city website, and you can see where he's been and all the sins he's committed and all the experience he's gained as a result. I've looked at it, I was quite impressed. Um, as we had a discussion this afternoon, this is a man who has executive management experience and is accustomed to making hard impartial decisions, which I think is a key to everything that we do here. So I'm glad to see him on the commission. I think he'll be a big help to us.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Welcome, Jamie.
Yeah, welcome, Jamie.
I can't see you, but welcome.
Yeah, we're happy to, happy to have you.
There he is.
I have a, a piece of information-
From staff, yes, please.
Um, so today you received an email in regards to the housing, um, the HCD, uh, letter, the comment letter that came in on the tw, seventeenth of September. What you should also be expecting, independent of that, is an email, um, inviting each individual commissioner to a walkthrough regarding Hotel El Roblar. Um, that'll be an email that'll be coming forthcoming tomorrow. Um, and that'll be, I mean, obviously, there's some, some of you who are not in this state, so when you're back in this state, I invite you to, um, to schedule an appointment with, uh, members of Hotel El Roblar and doing a walkthrough. It's not required, but just know that it helps this commission to be fully aware of the proposal and the ideas behind, um, their proposal. So just know that that'll be coming forward, uh, likely tomorrow.
When, when you do do the walkthrough, though, I would caution you not to make any, um, dis, statements that sound like decisions, or, um, I, I think it would be a-
Right.
Providing opinion, I, I think it's, it's, you've got to be super, super careful and cognizant of what you're, what you're looking at, how you're commenting on certain aspects. It's really, it's, you're almost like a sponge at this point, absorbing the information. It's their opportunity to provide, provide you as a commissioner, the information, um, and clarification. In addition to that, I, I don't know if you were gonna say this, but-
I, go ahead.
Uh, there could only be up to two that could attend these meetings, or attend these walkthroughs. I don't want to call a meeting because they're not meetings.
A minimum of three different tours.
Correct.
Correct. You can go on your own, you can go with another commissioner, but that's, that's it, because otherwise it becomes a meeting under the Brown Act. So if all three of you are, or three, if a quorum is attending. So, um, I would recommend you go, you see the sites, and you say nothing, or you make, you make general comments, but no, no opinions, no decisions, no expressions how, how you will vote, or if you will vote, or, or anything like that, because of, um-
Potential Brown Act violations. I, and the other thing is, if you feel uncomfortable with what we just said, and you, you would feel more comfortable with someone, um, with a staff member attending in addition to that, um, I could certainly be available, uh, as well as I can have a staff member. Uh, Mara could also potentially be available as well, so that there's some comfort level there.
Right. I've walked the perimeter and looked at all the locked gates, but that was not very enlightening. Um, so I, I would personally look forward to having some kind of a tour, but as Nikhil said, if three of us showed up for a tour, that would be a quorum, and we would be having a public meeting in effect that wasn't really public, and that's a violation. If, if we even go serially, one at a time, and there is discussion between an individual commissioner on tour and the proprietors there that, that provides information about, well, your fellow commissioner said so-and-so, then it becomes, um, a serial meeting, which is also a violation of the Brown Act. So the thing to do is go, ask lots of questions, don't give any hint that, that you might be leaning one way or another because you are, you are saying, I have decided something outside of a public meeting, and that's a violation.
I, and I would strongly recommend not getting into a back and forth with the, uh, the applicant.
Ask questions and-
Well, even, I would even say if you have questions, write them down and pass them on to staff, uh, because they, because they may be in a better position to get those questions answered.
Okay.
I just want, I just want to make sure that we avoid both a Brown Act and we don't have a, re, re, result in a need, need for recusal on basis of bias, um, or create a, create a situation where we're handing them a-
Or premature decision.
Exactly.
Yeah. Clear as mud to everybody?
Yes.
Yep, that's fair, it's good.
Okay. Um, any other business before the commission?
I just-
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it's just really, uh, so, you know, um, I guess it came to, it's just something I started thinking about tonight. Um, I really think that we need to, uh, I, I, I'm not sure where we got the idea that splitting a project in terms of decision-making, splitting it up and doing part staff, part planning commission is a good idea. I really, I think that it ends up making the applicant, uh, misleading the applicant possibly, or, you know, it's hard for them to understand. Um, and I, I would strongly caution, uh, that that's not a, that's just not a wise path to take. I'm not sure where the impetus is coming from to do that, but, uh, I just think it's, it's problematic. And, and anytime you try, you know, then you don't see the project in its whole entirety. And, and, um, I just, I, I just think it's a bad idea, and maybe we need to talk about it later if there's something we need to fix in the code or in the, um, director exemption, uh, guidelines, whatever the heck it is. Um, maybe we need to do that, but I just think that it's, uh, it is not a wise thing to do.
Certainly harder to wrap your head around it, yeah.
I don't think it does the applicant, um, any service either. It, it just, you know, it's kind of, uh, they, they think they've got an approval, but then, oh, whoops, no, they don't really. And, um, so it just, it just leads to a poor process, in my opinion.
Okay. I see our, our city council liaison has departed. And, and therefore, at nine thirty, I declare this meeting adjourned. And, and therefore, at nine thirty, I declare this meeting adjourned.